Good afternoon, everyone. Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please to establish quorum.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Laloe? Councilmember Laloe is expected momentarily. Councilmember Harris?
I'm here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Vang?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmember Valenzuela, would you please give us the honor of leading us with the landing knowledge and political allegiance?
Absolutely. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement. Sacramento's... Oh, there it goes. Waiting for it to come up on the screen here. There we go. In honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands, to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Hutwin-Wintun peoples, and the people of the Wiltun and Kriya, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Now, please remain standing for the pledge salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council member. Again, good afternoon, fellow members, colleagues, the city staff, and most importantly, the members of the public here. Let us begin with our consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to speak on separately or be voted upon separately?
May I have a...
Comments on 10 and 20?
Okay, excuse me, one second. 20 is not a consent item.
Oh, right, sorry.
That's okay.
Just number 10.
Just number 10, then, okay. Any other members? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yeah, just a quick question on item 6.
Okay. Let me announce, though, before we do any of that, that at staff's request, item 17 is going to be continued. So if anybody's on for item 17, at staff's request, that's going to be continued. Will that require a motion, Madam?
Yes, sir, it will require a motion.
Okay, well, we'll get to that, then, after the consent calendar. Just wanted to give the public notice. Okay. I see no one else in terms of members in the consent calendar. Is there public... Well, let's hear from Councilmember Valenzuela on item 6. Go ahead.
Yes, I had an idea from a constituent. I wanted to ask Bridgette if she's on about Sharps containers. I believe we've talked about this before, wondering if there's any opportunity for Renzakane to work with us on installing Sharps containers, if we work with others like Harm Reduction Services for that. Just curious where we're at on any of that.
Yes, we can do that. And if that agency or individual email me, we can work directly with them to support that need.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Councilmember Harris on item 10?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This item is a framework for funding priorities to use ARPA funds for the North Gate corridor. It's a basic framework, and I've received some communications about other things people might want to see. We have had two community meetings on the subject to solicit comments from the constituents. The most recent comment is, could this money be used for park improvements? And so we are working with the city attorney to see if that is a possibility. If it is, then we could conceivably consider a parks project along North Gate as well. Anyway, it's a great framework, and thank you to my staff for pulling this together. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harris. So then, let's take a motion and a second on the consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Gata, public testimony?
Yes, Mayor, I have one caller with our two hands raised to make public comment on the consent calendar. And again, this is the consent calendar for members of the public. The first is Mr. Davis.
Hello?
Mr. Davis, if you'll proceed?
Yes, I would like to say to number 10, first of all, I'd like to congratulate City Councilman Jeff Harris in the North Gate Boulevard corridor. I have a lot of business I do on North Gate Boulevard. Shout out to Smart and Final and the great Jim Boy's Taco and all the things that go on on North Gate Boulevard. So I'm happy for them. It's great to see that $5 million is going in that area. I would hope that Marysville corridor would be number two. That's what they talked about. And then we'll wrap it up with Del Paso Boulevard. So congratulations to you, City Councilman Jeff Harris. That's a wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Annette Emery.
Hello, this is Annette Emery. I'm with Gardenland North Gate Neighborhood Association. I just want you to know, I totally appreciate the ARPA funds and the way they're being designated for North Gate Boulevard. We've long wanted North Gate to be a destination, and after the pandemic, it became more obvious than ever that we need to get people to not just rush through North Gate, but to stop, slow down, look at the various businesses and the many restaurants we have to offer. And I really do believe that this funding is a good way to look at it. The fence will give a unified look. The lighting will help it feel safer. The food truck plaza will go right near the new mural on North Gate and Peralta. So I'm very excited. Thank you so much to Councilmember Harris and his staff for pulling this together and really listening to the public on this. And I just want to say I am very excited and very supportive of the ARPA funds on North Gate Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker on consent is Marbella Sala.
Hi. Thank you. I have a few comments. As president of Gardenland North Gate Neighborhood Association, I'm enthusiastically supportive of the North Gate Boulevard Economic Recovery Plan. It's been for almost a year that we've been talking about this plan. And Councilman Harris, as he mentioned, has had several community meetings with GNNA and North Gate and the North Gate Business Community through this process. He heard what we said. And basically, it's outlined in the staff report, but I'll reiterate it, is traffic and safety, the importance of traffic and safety on North Gate. And with that is, you know, putting in a whole new fence around North Gate and being able to do something with the sidewalks, lighting, et cetera. We also focused on, as Annette mentioned, making North Gate a designation and being able to provide it a celebration and a place for our community to come together. And that would include creating a food plaza over there by the new mural, being able to have food trucks. We're also, and creating a fresco dining opportunity for our small businesses. We've also been engaged with SMUD in and the new business and our small businesses in a recovery plan that would allow them to upgrade their electrical appliances, much-needed air conditionings, et cetera. And the small businesses want to see something like that. They need that kind of support to come out of COVID. In addition to that, we also need, what we heard is, they need a system that they can negotiate their leases with their land, the property owners, negotiate issues that come up with the property owners, and this would go all into the plan. So thank you very much, Councilman Harris, for all your support, and I'm so happy that this is gonna happen soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Well, thank you. Let me on this item. I want to thank Councilmember Harris as well for being such a strong advocate for the Boulevard and delivering these resources. And I just want to note for all of us on the city council that this is and was a deliberate effort to invest our resources that could be spent in many ways, including internally, directly in our neighborhoods and directly along the business corridors that have been too often forgotten. Done the same with Del Paso Boulevard. Of course, not a business corridor, but significant investments in Marina, in Alder Grove and Marina Vista. And we continue to lead and invest outward. And this is a really important example of that. I'm just very happy for the residents in the North Gate area who fought hard and their council member backed them up here big time. So thank you. All right? Let's call the roll.
Thank you. So the roll call on consent calendar, Vice Mayor Ashby? Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier? Councilmember Chenier?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 17, motion by Harris, second by Gata, to continue at staff's request. Please call the roll.
And Mayor, that was a motion to continue to August 9th, correct?
Correct, thank you. I'll go ahead and second. I already, Councilman Gata, I already did.
I'm sorry, didn't hear.
It might be his. Go ahead.
Thank you. So item 17 will be continued to August 9th. That motion was by Harris and a second by Gata. Vice Mayor Ashby? Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, thank you all very much. Let's move now to item 18. Who is taking on this item?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam City Clerk, members of the city council. My name is Jim Byer. I'm a city surveyor for Public Works. Before you this afternoon is an item which proposes adopting a resolution to vacate a 50-foot-wide public right-of-way facing to and east of Royal Oaks Drive and just north of Highway 160. The vacation request is being made to facilitate an apartment project, The Grove at Woodlake East. The owner of said property is requesting a vacation of a 50-foot road right-of-way, and the project has been approved for construction of 73 new dwelling units. Public works staff, along with other utilities, support this vacation request. And furthermore, this project is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 general plan as in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. And that concludes my presentation for item 18.
Okay. Questions? Public testimony? Debate or discussion? Motion?
Mayor, do you have one hand...
Don't make, Mayor.
I do have one hand raised to make public comment on this item?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's D8 Neighborhood Vine.
Hi, Mindy, this is Daphne, and hello, council and mayor. I just wanted to make sure that I did not miss the fact that we had some items that we wanted to take off of the consent calendar, and I don't know if I missed that. I just came on. I am okay with what you're speaking about on the item right now, number 17, but that was just a question.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been completed. So Mayor, I have no more speakers. We'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the motion, Mayor.
On item 18, thank you, Councilmember Jennings, second...
My second.
Second by Councilmember Laloe. Please call the roll.
And Councilmember Jennings, does it include opening and closing the public hearing?
I will open and close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Let's go to 19, please.
I will continue with item 19. Before you this afternoon is an item which proposes adopting a resolution to vacate a portion of a 15-foot public right-of-way known as Catville Alley. This vacation request is being made to facilitate the commercial development project consisting of a two-story retail and office building and two drive-through restaurants. It's known as Bell Avenue Commercial Center. The owner of said project is requesting a vacation of a portion of the public alley. Public works staff, along with other utilities, support this vacation request. And furthermore, this project is consistent with the Sacramento 2035 general plan and is in compliance with the California Streets and Highways Code. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Questions? Public testimony, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
Then let's take a motion if there's no debate or discussion. All right. I'm sorry, the motion...
I'll open and close the public hearing, move the item.
Thank you, Councilmember. There's a second? Call the roll, please.
I believe the second was by Vice Mayor Ashby. Correct.
I think so, yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby? Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right. We're moving through here. That passes. Item 20.
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Good afternoon. I'm Danny Abbott with the Community Development Department. This project is a proposal for a 77-home subdivision on a vacant eight-and-a-half-acre urban infill site along San Juan Road in South Natomas. The Planning Design Commission voted unanimously last month to recommend approval of the project. Staff supports the proposal and also recommends its approval as it would offer entry-level housing in close proximity to several schools, parks, grocery stores, and commercial services. There is no planned presentation from the applicant. Both staff and the applicant will be available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Public testimony?
Mayor, I have no hands raised to make comment on this item.
Well, Councilmember Harris is... Jeff can't hear you.
Got it, thank you. This project is being offered by SKK Development, Sotiri Cola Katronas. Again, we've had several community meetings about this, and in fact, the developer made substantial changes to the project to meet the community and their need. I'm very much in favor of this project. I hope that my colleagues will be as well. I think it'll be a tremendous addition to the housing stock in South Natomas area, and I would like to open and close the public hearing and move the staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
So Mayor, do you have one hand raised to make comment on this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Go ahead.
No problem. Looks like I have two. Annette Emery is your first speaker.
This is Annette again. I just want to say thank you. So often people say government doesn't listen. This is one. We did have public hearings. If it's originally supposed to be rental units. It really got strongly argued that for neighborhoods, especially the poorer neighborhoods, the only way families ever get generational wealth is through buying homes. And I really do want to thank both the developer and city staff for taking this seriously and changing this to homes that could be added to our housing market and help families get established in the area. It'll be great to see, you know, we all like green spaces, but there's basically an empty field. So just thank you. I am very supportive of this project, and I do hope we can get like some bicycle lanes attaching a little bit more. But that's another thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Daphne is the final speaker on this item.
Mayor, City Council, and Madam Clerk, I would like to see more of the housing projects also happening in areas like District 5 and District 8 in an equitable fashion. I understand that Natomas needs those components, but we also need those types of things in the Southern California area. I'd like to see more increased focus on allowing individuals who make minimum wage become homeowners, and that's something I would like to see the council to put towards their priority. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, is there a motion and a second on this?
There is.
Okay, then let's call the roll, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
I'm sure...
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, that passes. Thank you. Let's now go to item 21 as we begin the discussion calendar. We have four important items. The first one is the Office of Public Safety Accountability 2021 Annual Report. Dr. Watson?
Oh, Mayor, let me make sure we are sharing the screen.
Here we go.
All right. Hello, Mayor and Council. Dr. Letitia Watson, Director for the Office of Public Safety Accountability. Today, the focus of the presentation is to provide a brief overview of the Office's 2021 annual report. The annual report, it provides a comprehensive review of the Office's performance in tracking and monitoring internal investigations, reviewing completed investigations, as well as the statistical, all our statistical data for all investigations, reviewing completed investigations, and again, making sure that our statistical data is as detailed as we can get it for this particular year. Now, we also had some highlights for 2021. We were able to implement Mayor's police reform and the first City of Sacramento Inspector General to position during 2021, specifically March 29th. So our Inspector Dwight White is here accompanying me with this presentation as well. Here you see the mission of the Office of Public Safety Accountability, but the most important goals, of course, are to improve public trust, ensuring accessible complaint processes, promoting thorough, fair investigations, increasing transparency, and detering police misconduct. Our office strives to meet each of these key goals in regards to oversight and accountability. The Office is charged with providing oversight to the city's public safety organizations, complaint processes. We also are a liaison between the city and its diverse communities. The goals of the Office are to promote trust, transparency, and accountability in the city's most critical public safety departments. We provide fair and impartial oversight of those agencies. We receive complaints from the community. We audit departmental investigation results and independently conduct investigations into allegations of police or fire misconduct. This office also issues recommendations concerning community relations, outreach, public safety department policies and procedures, the training needs of the public safety agencies, and individual case resolution as needed. Now, the 2021 annual report, it includes a multitude of statistics regarding complaints and allegations of misconduct. So on the upcoming slides, I'll just highlight some of that information, not all of it in its entirety. We'll start with the Sacramento Police Department. Police complaints are allegations of misconduct against any departmental employee involving a violation of any law, rule, regulation, policy, or important or other improper job performance. Please note that more than one allegation can be attached to any complaint involving public safety personnel. What you see before you is a multi-year comparison of allegations of misconduct for the Sacramento Police Department. In 2020, the total allegations were 794, and when you compare those to 2021, the allegations totaled 707. So the allegations for 2021 decreased by 87 allegations. And I know some, especially for the public, are looking at the drastic increases between 2016 to 2018 in comparison to 2019 through 2023. And that difference is specifically in regards to the California Department of Justice releasing a report analyzing the use of force policies and procedures within the Sacramento Police Department. And as a result of that report, there were modifications made to the Internal Investigations Manual, and it resulted in changes to the complaint process. And so there's where the huge differences came in in regards to making sure that every possible violation of policy is observed and that a formal investigation is initiated and tracked. Now, this particular illustration here shows that in 2021, there were a total of 242 complaints that consisted of 706 allegations of misconduct. These were investigated, completed, and they were closed out in 2021. The dispositions of those 706 allegations that were closed out in 2021 were accompanied by... 114 of those were from older cases, and then 128 of those were filed in 2021. To note, 279 of all the completed investigations of allegations of misconduct were sustained by closeout. Most importantly, the highest proportions of allegations that were reported were improper search and seizure, neglect of duty, discourtesy, and service. This chart just illustrates the discipline that was imposed from the complaints that were completed throughout the investigation for 2021. And also just make note that one case can result in multiple disciplinary actions against multiple employees. We'll move to the Sacramento Fire Department. For this reporting period, the Sacramento Fire Department received a total of 74 complaints pertaining to 167 misconduct allegations. This illustration shows the multi-year comparison of the complaints for the fire department. In 2020, the total complaints were 59, and then in 2021, the total complaints were 74, an increase of 15 complaints. We'll also look at the Sacramento Fire Department's dispositions by allegation for this reporting period of the 74 complaints that involved 167 misconduct allegations filed. 69 of those complaints involving 157 of those misconduct allegations were investigated, completed, and closed during 2021. The largest proportion of the allegations reported on the fire department were improper tactics, discourtesy, neglect of duty, and service. A total of 55 misconduct allegations received a disposition of sustaining. And here you have the Sacramento Fire Department's discipline from completed investigations. And on to what the Office of Public Safety Accountability and their performance of all of this information. What these charts show is that during 2021, the office conducted a formal review of 64% of all complaints and allegations of misconduct filed against the Sacramento Police Department. The office fully reviewed 100% of the complaints filed against the Sacramento Fire Department. Of the completed investigations that were reviewed by the office, there was one fire investigation and two police investigations that were sent back for further review and modifications. The Office of Public Safety Accountability and our new Inspector General position. This newly established position... This newly established position conducts concurrent independent investigations of officer-involved shooting deaths. And police used to force incidents resulting in serious bodily injury. Upon completion of the initial onboarding process with the City of Sacramento, our new Inspector General Dwight White began his primary responsibility of serving. In an on-call capacity on March twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one, responding to critical incidents. As well as during this reporting period, the Inspector General responded to two officer-involved shootings and initiated independent investigations. The chart also provides the status of those investigations as well.
Dr. Watson, on that, on that subject, we know that there have been a couple of officer-involved shootings recently. Is Mr. White? Was he out on the scene? Is he engaged, um, uh, up to now on everything that has occurred in terms of officer-involved shootings since? November of twenty twenty-one?
Yes, this report here just specifies for the annual report for twenty twenty-one. Um, but Councilmember Jennings gave me the, um, idea to do a semi-annual report, uh, for twenty twenty-two, so to come back and, and do that as well. Wish that would include the, um, recent officer-involved shootings. But if there's something specific, uh, you have a question about Mayor, he, he's, uh, here. Um, so if you want to speak with him at this point in the presentation, just about over.
I don't know. I mean, I do think it begs the question as. Any of these incidents occurred, it probably is a good thing for. Mr. White either, I, I'm not sure exactly how to do it, but that there be some form of, some form of timely reporting about. Process or initial inquiries or initial concerns or, or, or that. Um, there was no controversy, et cetera, et cetera, just something that is in real time as opposed to just getting. A semi-annual report about something that was high-profile four, five, six months ago.
It depends on how you want it. So far, uh, because again, um, it's a, a new position that we implemented. Um, officer-involved shootings take quite a long time to conclude. So if you would prefer. To have, um, a presentation, uh, before the investigation is completed. Um, it would provide limited information, but it still could be done if, if that's how you want.
But let, let's talk about it a little bit offline. I just want to make sure that. There's some, Mr. White holds a very important position here in the city that there is. More engagement, if you will, with the policymakers and our staffs around anything that, uh, we, we're, we would be concerned about in real time.
No problem. And this, uh, the presentation is almost up, just in case, Mayor, we have questions. Um, this is just the second, uh, slide in reference to, um, the position. Uh, regardless if an officer-involved shooting does not, uh, or does occur in the, uh, City of Sacramento. Um, Dwight has other responsibilities as well. Um, and he is responsible for the inspection, review, and research of aspects of complaint investigations regarding allegations of misconduct. So this chart depicts that although the office, um, was able to complete sixty-four percent. Of the allegations of misconduct that came in, um, Mr. White, uh, was able to complete thirty-nine percent of that. Uh, since he began being assigned, uh, case review on May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-one through the end of the year.
The other, if I may, just, I'm sorry, but the other practice, because I'm, I don't want to forget. So knowing that I think would really be important is to have a protocol where you sit down with the police chief. And or the police chief's management, um, uh, ahead of a council presentation to just discuss. Your findings, um, and, and in case there needs to be any, if there's any difference in terms of data reconciliation. That is needed, I think that would be a, a, an important step to have that sit down. Obviously, it's your work and, uh, uh, and independent, but just, uh, go through that step, uh. In case they have any comments.
Yes, we met, uh, last week as well.
Who, who met? Who met?
The police and myself.
And with the chief herself or?
Yes, just myself and the Chief of Police on last Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then this is, um, just the recommendations, uh, for all three organizations. For OPSA, we, uh, need to work to staff. Uh, to review one hundred percent of police cases where we are able to identify patterns and trends. Uh, we also need to ensure that we improve our, uh, information sharing with other city departments that have investigative responsibilities. Um, for employee, uh, misconduct and actions. And then we also need to increase awareness and community engagement. For the Sacramento Police Department, um, we have. To make sure that we conduct quality investigations and ensure that the most accurate findings are attached to these investigations. Uh, we have to work to just decrease the lengthy backlog that we have and the wait that we have on complainants that are waiting for these. Allegations of misconduct to be investigated. Um, implement a policy requiring officers to provide their name and badge number during interactions. And implement a separate search and seizure policy as well. And with the Sacramento Fire Department, improve the collection of demographic data with the intake of all, uh, complaints and allegations of misconduct. And then develop an operational man, man, manual outlining the process for the investigation of complaints. And that's the highlighted, uh, version of the twelve-page report. Then Dwight and I are here and, and, um, open for any questions.
All right, let's begin to see if there is public testimony.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four hands raised. First is Margot Ronaldo.
Hi, um, I just have a quick question. Um, I noticed in your presentation, you mentioned that the Sacramento Police Department should work to conduct. Quality investigations to ensure the most accurate findings. Um, what, what exactly did you mean by that and, um? What aspects of the quality of the investigation should be improved specifically? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daphne.
Yes, I just wanted to thank staff for their presentation that they provided to council, and I'd like to also see that report actually posted in public area. And Mayor, I appreciate you asking for, um, some input from the Fire Chief Administration and also the Police Administration. But we also need to make sure that they have independence to, for reports to the public independently to make sure that we're, we're giving an accurate account of what's happening. So I appreciate the staff report and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Um, D eight Neighborhood Vine is the final speaker on this item.
Actually, that's me as a duplicate, and I was in.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no more speakers.
All right, um, are there members of the council? Councilmember Valenzuela.
Uh, yes, I had a couple of comments, but first I wanted to see if Dr. Watson maybe wanted to respond to the public commenters' question about the recommendations.
Sure, uh, just a short, uh, answer is, is that, um, Internal Affairs receives a multitude of allegations of, uh, misconduct. And all of them are not, uh, investigated by the personnel that's assigned to Internal Affairs. Uh, some of the investigations are considered to be informal and are handed to the different, uh, commanders that are responsible for divisions in which those employees report to. And they, um, have a multitude of duties, uh, when you're in patrol divisions. And I just may, want to make sure, um, that regardless of whether Internal Affairs or personnel within the patrol districts, um, review. Uh, allegations of misconduct that they are looked at and very much so paid attention to and thoroughly looked at. Um, because I realize that they have a lot to do in the patrol divisions, but it's important that whoever is looking at it, regardless of if it's Internal Affairs or not. Uh, that they are looked at thoroughly and, and in detail to make sure that the, the investigations are handled thoroughly.
So that sounds like a very, um, important point, and thank you for bringing that up and explaining that further. Um, I guess my comment was briefly just wanting to recognize that, um, similar to a few of us on this dais, you came in during a pandemic, as did the Inspector General. And, um, I know community outreach and engagement is tough to do, um, when you can't actually go to meet people. So wanted to make sure to definitely offer support when it comes to this community education. I think that's really important. I'm glad to see that on your radar. Um, would really like to help connect and build relationships with the community so that they continue to build trust in, in what you're doing and in coming to you. Um, when there's concerns or issues that arise, um, and also obviously working with our police commission, which I know you attend those meetings. But, um, I think there's a lot of opportunity in this year as we're starting to reopen with COVID and to get out there and build those relationships. So just want to encourage you on that and be here, offer myself and my team the support in that regard. Um, thank you, Dr. Watson.
All right, thank you so much, um.
Mayor, I just wanted to tell Councilwoman Valenzuela, if she had noticed from the, um, the first slide of the Police Department. Um, it'll show what allegations that the Police Department received and what allegations that the office received. And that also leans to the issues with us, uh, needing to increase awareness and engagement. Uh, we have very, very few, when you, uh, look at the totality of the allegations of misconduct that are reported, it's not a huge, huge portion coming to the office directly. It's right, less than a hundred. And so when you look at seven hundred and then you look at less than a hundred, we, we're not known as much as we need to be, um, if they want to use us as an opportunity.
Okay, Mr. Yeah. Very good. Mr. White, have you been around to, um. Meet with the city council members and or gone out to any of the. The, the neighborhood associations or any of the community groups? And if not, can we help you in any ways kind of? You know, introduce or reintroduce yourself out there in the community. Um, Congress Valenzuela is right, you know, COVID is. Really, uh, stunted, um, our collective ability, I think, in many respects to be out there. But I just, I want to make sure that the, the public and community leadership and, and my colleagues really get to know you. Um, because you have a very important job.
No, I would, uh, appreciate that. Um, I have, um, done a little bit of talk at area, um, neighborhood watch meetings. And, um, I, I have done that, but as far as, um, the, the actual social groups that I want to talk to and, and, uh, familiarize myself with. That has been a little hard because of COVID and because of, um, I think people get scared when they see Inspector General sometimes. Um, but yeah, I would, I would definitely welcome the, the help of the community outreach for sure.
Very, very good. Uh, yeah, I think I would ask my colleagues, members too, um. If you would, uh, reach out to Mr. White and help, um, introduce him to leaders in your communities, i- in your respective districts. So let, let, let's, let's help here, um, even a little bit more, kind of make this. Office, uh, the entire office frankly, and especially the Inspector General, uh, more known. Um, asset, if you will, within our, within our community. I, I'd really appreciate that. Councilman Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I think that's a great idea. I've met Mr. White. He's, um, very articulate and personable. I think he'll make a very positive impression on our community associations. And, uh, Dwight, I'd be happy to introduce you to everybody in my district and we'll get to work on it right away.
Okay. Fill up his calendar, please. Okay. Um. Very good. All right, there's no vote on this. Appreciate it. Um, thank you for the, the numbers and, and, uh, and the statistics and, and, and all the important and good work. Um, there's more to do here, and I, I, I do want to reiterate again. There's a, what I was called creative tension here, right? You're, you know, in some ways it's good that your arms length from the Police Department, uh, and the Fire Department, because you are the, uh, oversight body. On the other hand, to the degree that you can actually share real information, and again, we're not talking about the commission here. We're talking about OPSA with the police chief, with the interim fire chief, um, and can, um, and can reconcile. You know, information, um, and, and be talking regularly about frankly, what we're all interested in, which is how to improve. Procedure and process and keep the officers and the public safe and safer. That, that's a, that's a good thing. Um, and it still, I, it still feels to me a little stilted and maybe a little bit formal. And, um, some of that is appropriate in terms, again, arms length, but I just think, um, please continue to work on that.
No problem. Thanks, Mayor.
Will do.
Okay, members, uh, let us move on now to, uh, item number twenty-two.
Hey, Mayor, that's, uh, mine. Uh, good afternoon, I'm Mayor Council. We're here today, uh, uh, in April, the council directed me to prepare a charter amendment for placement. On the November eighth, uh, general municipal election, and the purpose of this measure would be to amend the Charter, section one seventy-one. By add an express language that clarifies how a newly adopted redistricting map gets implemented. Uh, as you can see on page two of the staff report, the old language, which, uh, is indicated in strikeout. Uh, said only that a commission adopted final map was effective immediately upon adoption. Uh, those words coupled with Sacramento's historic practices created confusion as to what, uh, what that meant, what purposes a newly drawn map was put to. Um, the language we have in front of you today, which would be, uh, the measure that was put in front of the voters in November. Um, is modeled on state legislation and it clarifies that a newly adopted redistricting map, uh, is to be used, uh, to serve the core purpose. Um, for elections and identify the boundaries for the next upcoming council elections and council elections after that. Um, I, uh, trust that you find this language as clear as you wanted me to make it, and, uh, with that, I have any, uh, I'm here to take any questions.
Mayor, I have one speaker. Um, Mayor, I have one speaker. Um, Daphne.
Go, go ahead. Yes, yes, um, to the city attorney and also to the council, I'd like to make sure that the attached map that we put on the system is what was being used. In our June election, which would be the first election. And would we be implementing, uh, representation as of June? Uh, as opposed to waiting till November and December like we're doing now. I just want to make sure that that is the clarification. And I wanted to make sure that the map boundaries that are attached in the E comment are the correct that would be going forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Uh, Suzanne, I, I assume you need a motion for this, right? Okay.
Uh, yes, Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Vice Mayor, there's a, a number of other, uh, resolutions attached to this item, which is to place the matter on the agenda, direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and accompany.
And you need an author, right?
Uh, if the council wishes to do arguments, yes.
Right, and I would assume the mayor, I added, this is a pretty non-controversial, it's just cleanup language, I'm sure he'd help you if, uh, if.
Whatever you want on this one. I'm happy to do it, Vice Mayor, if you'd like to take it, whatever you want.
Happy to do so. I sort of started out this road on the independent redistricting. I'm happy to see it through.
Please do.
Put the mayor and I both down as authors and we can do it together, but I know your team will prepare it, Susanna, because it's technical language, so that'd be great. Uh, and I'm happy to move the item with the mayor and myself as the, as the authors in favor, assuming we don't receive, uh, counter, it'll only be one argument.
Yeah, my hand up, Vice Mayor.
Oh, yes, go, go.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I got you both. Go ahead, Jeff and Eric.
Yeah, so you know, redistricting was, uh, kind of a tough exercise, uh, left a lot of constituents. Uh, unsure about their representation. So this is one piece of, um, doing cleanup so that we have a little bit more certainty in the redistricting process. We've talked about that in the past, so I won't reiterate, but I did ask for this charter amendment to come forward. Because it's very important to clarify in our charter about how. because it's very important to clarify in our charter about how implementation of new district lines will be placed. And so, yeah, I was going to move it. Vice Mayor beat me to it, but this is an important piece. I'm highly supportive.
Okay, thank you so much. Mayor Protem Geta?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also was going to move this and I'll actually request to be added on to the ballot arguments in the author of the statement here. Obviously, this came about specifically also because of District Six back in 2015 when the council redrew the lines in between the census when there wasn't a council member in District Six. And I think this clarifies it and I want to thank the city attorney for, for this. And I was proud to work on it with the League of City, League of Women Voters back in 2015. And obviously this helps clarify the issue. So I do want to thank the League of Women Voters for their, their work as well as the folks at Common Cause who were involved in, and also doing this early guidance back then. And also thank you, Susanna, and your team on, on the clarifying language here. So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add to that as part of the motion.
Very, very, very good.
Happy to accept him. That'd be great. In fact, I'll just get council member signatures for this. It's fine. You don't really want to, yeah, it's fine. That's great.
Yeah, you'll, you'll, you'll just handle it. You'll do great. Good. Councilmember Valensuela?
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, happy to support this today and clarify the charter in a really important way. I will say, and I know Susanna knows, I mean, we've been in a lot of communication about how implementation will work for the accelerated and deferred areas and how council members will collaborate on accelerated areas, how the mayor is going to collaborate with the council over deferred areas. And just wanted to say that I hope that does come back to the long ledge at some point for like a little bit further discussion and we can bring it back to council in December in terms of just getting into the details so we can give our constituents some real specific guidance on how this is all going to work and how we're going to manage the trash not getting picked up and as well as the big things that are coming our way. So really thank you for your quick work on this. I know it's not easy to draft a new ballot measure and what did we give you, two months? I don't know. So I'm really thankful for what you did on that and looking forward to the conversation because I know things are changing with the Attorney General waiting in and different things. So yeah, just hope we can do that when you're ready at some time this fall.
Yeah, yes, Councilmember, the city manager, the state clerk and myself have been working on that implementation plan to bring back to council in the fall. And so that's, that is our timeline and I definitely had more time on this one than I've had on some of these other items.
We're going to get to the next one in a minute. Okay, let's, is there public testimony?
Mayor, we've already taken the public testimony.
Oh, yeah, I knew that. Okay, let's, let's, let's call the roll then, please.
Thank you. And to reiterate, I had a motion by Vice Mayor Ashby and a second by Councilmember Harris. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that includes the, we're authorizing members of the city council to author the argument in favor. And that's Ashby Steinberg and Gara.
You know, it's, it's best to just list one council member. We want to switch, so let's just list the mayor as being the main per author. And then, but I will usher this through and Councilmember Garrett and myself will sign on with the mayor. But should we have to do a rebuttal, it is better to only have obligated one of us so that we can have additional people sign on, okay? Mayor?
Whatever you want and I'll make sure everybody's.
Trust me on this one. Okay.
All right. Thank you. So that resolution is authorizing the members of the city council, just Mayor Steinberg, with assistance from this team. Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloie?
Hi.
Councilmember Harris?
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Geta?
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that passes. Excellent work here. Okay, we now move to item twenty-three. I'm going to present here and I want to begin by really profusely thanking the city attorney here. Suzanne Alcala and, and Matt Ruiac for years of work on, on this sort of dense topic, especially over the last ten days, two weeks with the city attorney for and her team because it was Stephen DiGocchi and Matt and others as well. And I may not be naming everybody, but for really, really stepping up here under a deadline and helping us out. Really, really grateful to you. So the so-called TOT Hotel Tax Ordinance was written in nineteen sixty-four. I was five years old and I was an IVA, by the way, back then. But the, the world has changed. It was initially written, at least apparently with the intention to apply to be able to use the TOT for convention centers and for theaters. And it says for other places of public assembly. And we still believe, I still believe that there is a lot of room under that old ordinance to be able to do many things that involve job creation, that involve economic development specifically tied to tourism. But because there is some ambiguity, Councilmember Vang and I and Visit Sacramento, the city manager and others thought it would be timely and appropriate to bring this question to the city council and to the voters to update this ordinance really in a technical fashion to ensure that TOT can be used not for the general fund, not for every cause which is important where we need money, but for anything that helps us attract more tourism and build more hotels. And that's exactly what this measure does. It's technical. It ought to be non-controversial. It does not seek to raise the tax in any way. And we urge your favorable consideration of, of updating an ordinance, as I said, that has been on the books for over fifty years and is, is worthy of updating for the modern world. My, I don't know if Mike Testa is on the line here. Of course, he's been a partner in all of this. Mike?
I am here, Mayor.
Good afternoon. Go, go.
You know, in the, in the realm of public policy, if there's such thing as a no-brainer, this proposed ballot measure is as close to anything I've ever seen. As you've heard, the, the scope of permissible uses of TOT revenues has been on the books since nineteen sixty-four. By the way, I was five years from being born. When it was initially written, I've no doubt that the language was appropriate for the Sacramento of fifty-eight years ago. Over the decades, TOT funds have been used to build and operate Sacramento's convention and performing arts facilities. There's no question that these projects have helped to grow TOT revenues, create local jobs and stimulate economic activity for our local restaurants, bars and retail businesses. But our city has evolved from a destination that offered limited amenities to attract visitors to one in which Sacramento is recognized as a destination for music festivals, sporting events, culinary travel, Broadway performances, and of course, citywide conventions. Rather than argue over how to interpret the word "public assembly" in this ordinance, we support taking this path so there can be no doubt that these funds can be invested in diverse tourism projects that will benefit our community. It's important to note that the TOT is not a tax on residents. It is levied only on guests and hotel and other lodging businesses. It is also important to underscore that the TOT rate will not be increased with today's proposal. To be totally transparent, over the years, Visit Sacramento has considered approaching the city council with amendments to the TOT ordinance to make technical adjustments, allowing these funds to be used for tourism-related economic development projects. In the end, we decided to leave this antiquated language alone because we didn't want to take the chance that the twelve percent tax charged to hotel and lodging guests could be increased. Doing so would put Sacramento at a competitive disadvantage with our competitor markets. Nor did we want to end up debating whether these funds should be used for any purpose other than attracting more overnight business and leisure travelers to strengthen our local economy. Our bottom line view is anything that TOT revenues are spent on should automatically generate new TOT revenues. This is how we create new opportunities to bolster Sacramento's economy and enable future generations of Sacramento's to reap the rewards of a robust tourism economy. Tourism is a valuable means to an end in generating revenues that serve to improve the quality of life for our residents. We agree with you that the time has finally come to ask you and the voters to leave no doubt that these funds can and should be spent on tourism-related economic development projects. And I hope you'll all agree that our fate should not be tied to the poorly written and ambiguous language in this five-decade-plus-old ordinance. For this reason, Visit Sacramento urges you to vote yes on the proposed ballot measure that's in front of you this afternoon.
Thank you very, very much. So before I get, before, let me, let me just note that if the council is just supposed to go forward, I would ask that I be the controlling, whatever it is, the ballot guy here so that I can work with my colleagues here in Visit Sacramento to frame the argument. Well, let's, do we have, do we have public testimony?
Yes, Mary. Do you have four hands raised to make comment on this item?
I'm here in the public and I'll hear from the members. Go, go.
The first is Shira Lane.
Hi, Shira with HM nine one six Economic Development Community for Creatives and Sustainability, serving over seven hundred regional creatives currently headquartered in Old Sacramento. Broadening the opportunity to reinvest TOT funds to generate more tourism in Sacramento is definitely a no-brainer. But also a non-brainer is the creative economy. Arts and culture stimulate local economies through tourism, consumer purchases and enhanced quality of life, the kind that attracts young professionals to an area. The Creative Edge Plan that the city adopted calls for restoration of TOT funding for the arts as part of creating a more stable, ongoing investment in the arts. Yet the ordinance, as written, does not include the creative economy. The one-time COVID relief funding to the creative sector saved lives, no doubt. It kept critical institutions afloat and local creatives from losing their homes. But now it's time to build. And if we are to make this city an attraction, we need to be proactive and invest in creative vitality, which is what young professionals are looking for. I myself was brought here because my partner fell in love with this city on a second Saturday experience, leaving a San Francisco law firm that was offering him partner. I recommend in addition to section one, item two, quote, "Planning and implementation of economic development projects and programs that build cultural experiences, creative economy and local jobs," end quote. Increasing our creative vitality means rapid prototyping projects like activating K Street storefronts with creative, unique experiences while the city works on its long-term acquisitions and facility construction plans. The Creative Edge Plan calls for restoration of TOT funding for ongoing investment in the arts. It is unknown where or if arts and culture investment will ever be a line item on city budget, nor is it guaranteed funding year to year from Measure U. Creatives are social innovators able to swiftly stabilize threatened communities. If attracting professionals and families is the goal, the creative economy must be written in the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daphne.
Yes, the only language that I had concern with is the economic development having that more specific. I'd hate to see the dollars go strictly to developers and not support community. Competing with those dollars has been historically difficult, especially for the underserved communities. I'm looking for more economic equity and I would like to see the economic development further defined to be more restrictive or specific or at least have ratios of usage across the items that are listed on the ballot. So thank you very much and I appreciate the time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm calling in. I agree with Daphne and I would also like to put out the, put out for consideration actually speaking to hotel workers who are going on strike tomorrow before making any movement on this and helping to, and helping to preserve safety and security for them as well as make sure that we aren't just using them as fodder for quote-unquote or for the, the quote-unquote "economic benefits" of tourism. We can't have economic benefits if we don't take care of the people that live in our city and that work for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And our final speaker is Amir Dean.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Amr Dean. I'm with Local Forty-nine. We represent those very same workers that the previous speaker was talking about. We are the Hospitality Workers Union for the Sacramento region. We represent folks at the hotels downtown as well as casinos, as well as the convention center. And jobs at the convention center and many of the hotels in downtown Sacramento are good union jobs because we have the ability to advocate for, for increases and for healthcare like we're doing tomorrow. We're not going on strike, by the way. It's a, it's a rally and a demonstration. But thanks for, for mentioning it, Daphne. We're glad the city is working with the hotel industries on ways to bolster tourism in Sacramento and create more good union jobs. And we really encourage the city council to place this measure on the ballot. And we look forward to continue, continuing to work with the city and the hotel industry to ensure that the growth of tourism in Sacramento provides good union jobs that benefit Sacramento residents and the community as a whole. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right, let us then hear from our colleagues here. Start with Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've long wondered why the ordinance was written such that the majority of TOT tax could only be used to enhance the convention center itself. I think broadening the definition of the uses is a good thing. However, I think the language, and I'm hoping you'll agree with this, should be altered to state the real purpose here, which is not only tourism-related projects, but projects that enhance TOT recovery. I, I think that that's a really important piece to put in this measure so that TOT tax is not just generally used for projects that don't bring more tourism and augmented TOT to the city. So I'm wondering what you think about that.
Well, so I will just say to you, obviously there there is a potential campaign to be run if the council puts this on the ballot. And we were very careful and, and thoughtful in the way we put this language together. I think the rate reads is consistent with what the, what you're asking, Councilmember Harrison, that it is limited to tourism-related, tourism-related economic development projects that would create jobs and strengthen the local economy by definition. Those are projects that will strengthen the TOT that will lead to more hotels, but it's all tied to tourism. And I, I think we want to keep it this way because because of what some of our research has shown us the public is most receptive to.
Well, let me just ask Mike Testa the same question. Mike, do you feel that an indication in the actual language that TOT will be enhanced by the projects is imperative, you know, to more or less safeguard the use of TOT tax?
Yes, Councilmember, obviously I, I agree with what you're saying. We talked to a number of attorneys within the industry to see if, if this strengthened it to the level that we needed to, to, to carry the point that you're making. They all agreed that it did. As, as the mayor said, it is about tourism. And so that the, our attorneys recommended us that this was a strong statement and that it would protect the, the spirit of what you're saying, that it has to return TOT if we spend TOT on it.
Okay, thanks, Mike. That's all for now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harris. Vice Mayor Ashby?
Thanks, Mayor. And I just, you know, thanks to Mike Testa. I've talked to him a lot about this one too over the years. I really wanted to use TOT dollars to help offset costs for the aquatics facility. But at the time, this language was prohibitive. So I'm looking at Councilmember Vang and I know she's going to try to, to do a similar project in her district that I know will draw hotel rooms, will increase TOT dollars. And it would be great if this language made that pathway cleaner for her. I made a promise to Mike Testa that I would help him with this. And so, Mayor, while I believe you should be the only designated author because from a strategic position, that is the best way to go. I am happy to help you with this one as well and make sure that it gets across the finish line.
Thank you. I'll just say that I've been. Thank you. I'll just say that I've been, uh, Mike Testa and I have been working together on this with Councilmember Vang and, um, appreciate it. Okay. Councilmember, uh, or Mayor Protim Geta.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, one of the things I, I'm appreciative about this is that it gives us an opportunity and others, there's been many other types of festivals, particularly those cultural festivals that continue to grow. Uh, and so I, I know we're known as the City of Trees and the City of Festivals, but I think we're the City of Cultures and we're going to continue to become the epicenter for uh, different types of, of attractions here. And so, um, I'm excited about this because it get, does give us, uh, an ability to look at other parts of the city, other, to look at tourism and the, uh, ability to invest in those tourism activities. So I'll be supporting this. I do want to highlight though, some of the comments that were brought up earlier today that as we move through this and if the voters approve the measure that we work with our hotel workers and convention center workers, uh, they have a vested interest in making sure that al- also that our industry grows and, and, uh, so I, I think it's a strong partnership for us to be, uh, using every tool in the toolbox to make our tourism industry, uh, grow here as well. Uh, do you want to thank Mike Testa and all the team as well for, um, you know, keeping the, uh, the, the tourism alive during the pandemic and looking creatively out of, out of the box as well? I, I got a chance to see their presentation. Uh, with that, uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Vang for, um, uh, also this, uh, this effort.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to take this moment to thank you, Mike Tessa, really just uh, on your hard work on this and especially want to give a shout out to our city attorney, Susanna. I want to say thank you so much, uh, to you and your team for your hard work, um, in making this technical amendment to the TOT. Um, it was a quick turnaround and I just, I, I just want to say thank you. You and your staff worked incredibly hard to make sure that we get to this moment. Uh, I'm really excited about this measure, um, because I know it's going to help diversify tourism projects that create jobs and generate, uh, new TOT, uh, throughout our city, not just in downtown. Um, one thing I did want to ask in particular, um, because we did have a caller that called in regarding the creative economy, uh, Mayor and, um, city attorney, just wanted to ask you, um, as it stands right now, is the language broad enough to include, um, the arts?
Well, I believe, let me, I'll try first and maybe Susanna, you can help me here. Um, the language of the ordinance specifically mentions arts venues. Um, and, um, and so, yes, it is broad enough. Um, any project, and again, really what we're talking about here is the ability to bond against the TOT for capital and for acquisition. But any project that improves or increases tourism and job creation will be eligible. The arts, as Shira Lane said, is a job creator. The, um, the, the arts, as Shira said, are a driver and drawer of tourism. And so, the inclusion of arts venues, plus the idea, plus the, the fact that arts are specifically related to tourism, economic development, and job creation, I think makes it fully eligible. Finally, I will say that what Shira is also talking about is the city budget, of course, and the, the TOT, and we will get to that, but I think it's fair to say that, you know, this city council, we, we've done more to enhance the creative economy than than any other council in recent memory, and we're going to continue to do that. So it's not either or here. It's, it's trying to build up tourism, the arts, tourism and the arts together that, um, is our effort, not just today, but over the, the months and years.
Mayor and Councilmember Vang, if I could just chime in on that, we've actually already used TOT for the arts. We used it for the theater. We used it for the memorial auditorium. Those, those uses are permissible now and, and this language will only encourage and enhance that opportunity.
Thanks. Uh, and Mayor, I don't know if the item's been moved, but if it hasn't, I'd like to move it or second if it hasn't yet.
Okay, Councilmember Valenzuela. Did you want to say anything else on that? I'm sorry. I, I, I had referenced you. Is there anything?
No, no, Mayor. I, I concur with your legal opinion.
Okay, very, very good. Um, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly say how much I support this and as the representative of the district, Central City District, like, I think it's so important that we have a strong downtown. We all know that, but I also think we're a stronger city the more we can try to incubate and create more of that economic drive from outside of downtown as well. I think when North and South Sacramento are good, we're all better, um, for that. And so I'm really excited about this measure broadening the use and really looking forward to helping get it across the finish line, um, this November. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I want to thank all of the stakeholders, obviously Visit Sacramento. I think Unite as well, um, are being present here. You know, we, we all rise together when we all rise together and more economic development, more tourism, more jobs, more fun, for our community. And I'm, we're all, I'm all for it and I know you are as well. So let's take this technical change to the voters. Let's get this passed. Please call the roll.
So, Mr. Mayor, there are multiple items, um, on this, uh, to take action on, that one is being authorizing members of the city council to author arguments either in favor or against. Do you want to cover that also in the motion?
Yeah, I, if it's okay, if the motion would designate me and then I'll work with my colleagues in Visit Sacramento to make sure that it's we're, we're, we're all covered here. Um, that would be, so who made the mo- uh, my Councilmember Vang made the-
Mayor, you're, you're, you made that motion and Councilmember Vang seconded it.
Oh, did I? Oh. I, I'd, I'd reverse it if you wanted to. I don't care, but it's fine. Okay, then I'm the maker of the big, the big motion here. Councilmember Vang is the seconder. I'd be designated, uh, respectfully as the control of the ballot argument and as a signer. Is there anything else, Madam Clerk?
No, thank you. Just to confirm, you are the argument in favor. You'll be the-
I'm the argument, I'm the argument. I don't see anybody stepping up to want to lead the argument in opposition. So let's call the roll.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Hi.
Councilmember Harris.
Hi.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Chenier.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Geta.
Hi.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, that passes. Thank you again, uh, everybody. And, uh, onward. Our final item of the day is Item 24. I think I'm going to make the initial presentation and turn it over to Bridgette Dean, Howard Chan, and Erin Johansson. Um, and then we'll hear from the public and then, of course, we'll hear from the members. So let, let, let me begin here. Members, um, to state the obvious, we have a homelessness crisis. And since the last time we heard this item, the 2022 point in time came, point in time count, uh, was published, which shows that this crisis has worsened. We all know what an epic struggle it is to find sites, to approve, get sites approved, and to actually launch a project that brings unsheltered people indoors and off the streets and out of these tent encampments. We have a city-owned facility. It is the Science Center. We approved a contract in January for more than $3 million to have Hope Cooperative run it as a respite and service center. But we did make a decision some months ago to only adopt it or operate it as a temperature-based crisis center. And what has occurred since we made that decision now many months ago? According to the staff report, it has been opened six times. And despite the fact that on many more days, temperatures have exceeded 100 degrees Fahrenheit several occasions, multiple days in a row. But because the criteria are written such that there was not a weather, a National Weather Service heat advisory, we did not open the center. And so I have brought this item forward to make the constructive argument to my colleagues and to the public that we must say yes many more times than we say no. For if we continue to say no, then we are going to live with the status quo as we know it and as we rightfully articulate most every week before this council is unacceptable to us and unacceptable to our community. Now, the main opposition to opening this as a respite center the last time over the months was the concern about the Children's Receiving Home, a very, very important program and service in our community. And I will admit that in those first months, that I largely did not get personally engaged in negotiating or discussing with them potential ways to make this more or less acceptable to them, given their concerns. When I decided that it was vital that we not ignore a city-owned asset in trying to get more people off of the streets, the first thing that I did was to meet with the leadership of the Children's Receiving Home. And in about 45 minutes, we outlined together the terms of a good excuse me, the terms of a good neighbor policy and the terms and conditions under which the Science Center respite, uh, facility would operate. And as a result, you have the letter from the Children's Receiving Home leadership, specifically, uh, from, from the leadership on their letterhead in which they indicate now that they are neutral, which I know some background noise here. I'm sorry.
I believe it's Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, Councilmember Jennings, can you mute yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had muted.
It's okay. It's okay.
Yeah. Um, they are now neutral. Now, I know that isn't support, but it's also not opposition. And we all know the way this works and if you read the letter in detail, the message is that they are willing to work with us and try to make this work and make it work in a way that is good for them and safe for them. And we include all of the detailed provisions in this resolution in the agreement about security, about protocol if a child were inadvertently to wander onto the property and, and, and more detail. And so the situation has changed. And I just believe that in good conscience, we cannot allow a city asset to lay fallow when we have thousands of unsheltered people on our streets and our business communities and our neighborhoods are rightfully pleading with us to get more people out of those encampments and off the streets. Fifty people. And I urge just to go forward. Bridgette and Bridgette and Howard and, um, Erin Johansson.
Yeah, I have Erin online. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Bridgette Dean, the Director of the Department of Community Response. And I appreciate this coming back in front of the council. I believe, as you all know, uh, as the mayor stated, our numbers have grown exponentially of our unsheltered community members. And, uh, I have both Erin Johansson and Nick Golling, who is our program manager and DCR to, uh, make a few short comments. But I do want to stress that the opportunity to provide an individual with a safe space to be while we can stabilize and get them connected to the services is crucial. And the reality is that DCR staff come across hundreds of individuals every week who could benefit from a location where they can make that contact with a clinician or a support service member and start that upward path, whether it's into motel programs, housing, re-unification, et cetera. And these sites are crucial to start making that real impact in our community. It also allows, in the future, as this opportunity comes forth, to work with the individuals, uh, who uh, may need that help most, but it may be a very short contact and we can get them right into the appropriate space for them to move forward. I do want to also, um, state that I've worked, I've spoken with Shabon Katari from the county, uh, today, and, uh, she uh, will continue to work with me and the city to find a path forward on collaborative services at this location. And I think it's important to note that, uh, we all share in this, um, this effort together and that I continue to urge us to find other ways as such as this, to continue to support our individuals and our community members who are outside every day. So with that, real briefly, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Erin Johansson from Hope Cooperative and then Nick, uh, will be available as well to speak just real briefly on the good neighbor policy.
And then, then I want, uh, the city manager to, because he, and he can do it after, Erin, that's fine.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Council. Thank you for, um, allowing me to speak to you today. I just wanted to just briefly state that, um, we are ready, willing, and able to operate the center as the good neighbors that our, uh, reputation precedes us. We always operate in collaboration with our partners. I have been in conversation with Glenna at the Children's Receiving Home for months and our teams have met together. And, uh, we are, we are, um, able to support a safe, um, effort in that community and are fully capable of doing that. Also, our staff has great, large experience dealing with mental health and substance use disorders amongst the homeless population and are ready to collaborate with our partners at the county and other providers to make sure that those folks get into the services that exist in our community already, as well as connecting people to coordinated access and coordinated entry so that they can move along in their journey. Of course, we need more housing resources at the end. That is what we all know we need. But in the, in the interim, folks need a connection and they need, uh, someone to walk beside them as they make their way through that journey, and that is what we can offer at the center. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll have Nick come in after me to talk a little bit more about the operations as we move forward. Uh, I want to start by saying, uh, I do support this effort going forward, uh, you know, with one caveat. Uh, Mayor and I, as you know, Mayor, we've been talking about this over the last several months about the status of this property. And, you know, we had the, the situation you described earlier about being temperature-based versus what we're looking at today being a, uh, year-round respite center. Uh, and, you know, I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record here when it comes to, uh, our finances going forward. Uh, and that's part of why I support this is that, uh, should we, uh, should the council decide to move forward in this fashion? Uh, it is my intention to work, uh, and have been working with the mayor closely to bring back an updated version of the comprehensive siting plan such that we prioritize these medium to longer-term solutions such as, uh, the WX Navigation Center, Meadowview, Grove Avenue, Motel Conversions, and potentially this, um, this site, the, uh, the former Science Center. Uh, and as more resources become available from the state and otherwise, we could consider looking at other, um, implementations. Uh, but until such time, we will be, uh, focusing on maintaining the things that we've opened already as opposed to trying to open, um, more facilities, uh, without having the financial wherewithal to sustain them. So, and I'll leave it at that. Turn it over to Nick. He will, uh, talk, I think, briefly about the operations.
Go ahead, Nick. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much, Council and Mayor. Yes, what we, what we're looking at is to return to the original contract that we had set up with Hope Cooperative in January. And really, the goal, if we were to have this location open seven days a week for providing respite overnight as well as outreach and engagement services during the day, is really an opportunity to build the rapport that's necessary for individuals and families that are experiencing homelessness, um, in the street. Uh, it's, it's, it's common knowledge that people living out in the street are, they are living with a fight, flight, or flee mentality that's necessary for their survival. Having a safe place to be where there is an assistance that's available to help navigate our- Having a safe place to be where there is an assistance that's available to help navigate our continuum of care. Is going to generate more positive outcomes. And we're we're not trying to go through this willy nilly either. I appreciate that there's been multiple folks who've spoken about. The work that's been done with the children's receiving home. We've been working closely with them. Co authoring our good neighbor policy. That good neighbor policy is is important, right? Because. Not only is it an opportunity for us to continue to monitor the outcomes. Whether there are any potential negatives and certainly more importantly, if there are positive outcomes. With any of the locations that we that we could potentially open up according to the comprehensive siding plan, but as it relates to here. We have many safeguards. The goal is to ultimately be a net positive for this community. And to improve safety and security in that community, not to reduce it. We do have twenty seven twenty four seven staffing that would be there by Hope Cooperative as well as twenty four seven security. That are not only. Providing safety for those who would be on the site, but also in the immediate vicinity and certainly. Focusing very closely on being the best neighbors that we possibly can with those who are immediately adjacent to the to the location. So we're certainly ready. The 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 contract is written already. Hope Cooperative believes that they would be able to be ready to roll, I think, within thirty days if this were to be voted in a yes today. And city staff remains available to continue to. Provide any clarifications for any questions that may come up.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Let's now hear from members of the public. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have signed up?
So, Mr. Mayor, I have fourteen speakers signed up to speak.
Please.
First one is John Hearn.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Mayor Steinberg and staff and council members, thank you for your service to our community. We all do appreciate it. I noticed that Councilmember Bang has a sign in her office that says invest in youth. That is actually exactly what we're hoping you'll do this evening. Please allow me to read a letter written by my son. To all members, today I implore you to vote against the conversion of the Discovery Science and Nature Museum into a homeless shelter. This is not an instinctual rejection, but rather a calculated opposition. Today, like so many days before and many yet to come, is a day of choices, much like all of the days of choices already come and passed. This one too will require you to examine the facts, weigh the options, and shoulder the consequences. Those consequences will be, and in no particular order, increased drug usage, human trafficking, violent crime crimes against women, and perhaps. Most abhorrent reduced safety for children at two schools. And foster care facility, Pasadena Elementary. Miraloma High School and the Children's Receiving Home of Sacramento. These are not arbitrary consequences. In fact, based on the wealth of sociological and criminological data that we have. That we all have access to, these should be considered expected outcomes. Unfortunately, they have already come to be. Young girls have been accosted by transients. Outside and outside this facility on their way home from school. Think of your daughters. I ask you now, how can you possibly rest while such a clear threat to children is being introduced? How can such outcomes be tolerable? How can you convince yourself that it is reasonable? You cannot. You know it and we know it. However, there is a difference between you and us. We have the. Courage to voice our concerns and take a stand for the safety and well being of our children in our community. Isn't that also your purview as representatives of the people in this community? Today, I ask you not to vote against a homeless shelter, but rather vote in favor of public safety and welfare of children. May you have the courage and.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
May you have the instincts and courage to do what you know to be right, Justin.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Charles Duckworth.
And hello, Mayor, Council, City Manager, and of course, the press. Just a couple of months ago, this council agreed to six places. That the city manager should not. Not put a homeless shelter. Your intent, I thought, was good. It said, we need shelters for the unhoused. But we will not sacrifice the safety of children or the environment. It seemed to shout to the world loud and clear. Who could argue with this? We don't want to put kids risk or the environment either, for whatever the reason. Here are just three of those recommendations. And how they relate to today's vote. Not in a park, thinking of children and the elderly and the underserved that can't afford to go to the movies. Whose birthday parties are at the park, not at the roller rink. People like the ones that use the playground at Del Paso Park. This playground is less than a thousand feet from the proposed shelter. And although, Mayor, respectfully, you say that the proposed shelter is in a building. It's it that building is in a one hundred year old park. And it's not necessarily the in the building that's the problem. It's what happens outside the building, out in the hundreds of acres that that park is. You don't want it on a river nor a stream. The word stream may have a particular legal meaning, but there are two creeks that both empty into the river. Into the delta and on to the bay. Lastly, not near a daycare or a preschool. Maybe you don't know this. But they this children's home has both, and they are for previously traumatized kids. And as a respite for foster parenting. So that the baby the kids can be set. Today, Council and Mayor, you face a test. A test with just one question. You pass it or you fail it. Here is the question. Did you really mean that you wanted to protect the children and the environment?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Do you really mean? That you want to protect the children and the environment or not?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Brad Jones.
Hello, City Council. My name's Brad. The Twin Rivers School District has said they are willing to work with the city council on a site for a shelter. As they have multiple properties that are not currently being used. I've been advocating for this solution for over a year with District Two Councilmember Laloie. Recently with the city's Planning Academy. And currently with North Sacramento Participatory Budgeting Proposal Delegates. This past year, I've had plans drawn showing six seven zero Dixian Ave. A vacant Twin Rivers School District Building is ready for rehabilitation and placement of unhoused individuals. I've received no support for this use from my council representative due to its location adjacent to a neighborhood. The city of Sacramento has been paying out hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit for affordable housing projects. This financial cost is unsustainable and would bankrupt our city if we spend this amount of money on each unhoused person in the city. Six seven zero Dixian Avenue with its twenty thousand square feet of indoor space. Is already built and could result in numerous individual units at a cost of less than a hundred thousand dollars per unit. This building is located next to the Del Paso Boulevard Commercial Corridor. And would add to the workforce and dormitory housing. This nationally recognized historic property is continually being vandalized. In the Old North Sacramento Neighborhood and needs to be repurposed and occupied. I ask council members, support community members who have creative ideas to house the homeless. And affordable housing options at existing buildings at a fraction of what the council is spending currently to build. I would like to thank the Twin Rivers School District.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Bart Willis. Bart Willis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, I'm my name is Bart Willis. My wife Kyle and I moved here from the Bay Area approximately five years ago. I worked in the city of San Francisco for twenty years. And a homeless shelter moved in approximately a mile away from us. From that time moving forward. The garbage, the vandalism. The the needles for, you know, just being honest. Were everywhere. As the crime raised, I've noticed the same thing happening here. The homeless numbers are starting to creep more and more into the neighborhood. We didn't move up here. To be in a city environment with with the homeless. I'm very sad for the homeless and and they do need help. I just think this is a very poor selection, a very poor selection. Yes, it may be easy because the city already owns it. But it's not the right answer. For the families, the children. The businesses in the area, it'll be a nightmare. Because you know it won't. The garbage will not stay in the homeless shelter. It moves out for blocks. I don't want that for my family, and I also don't want. The people that live here, our property values will drop if we have people roaming the neighborhoods. And that will hurt us financially. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Juliet Poro.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi. My name's Juliet Poro, and I'd like to comment on discussion item number twenty four, which is the reinstatement of the operation of a full time homeless triage center. At the former Science Museum, which is directly adjacent to the Sacramento Children's Receiving Home on Auburn Boulevard. I am a resident of an incorporated Sacramento County, which is the community which literally surrounds this project site. I am very concerned about the impacts that this is going to have on our community. Including the safety risks that transient individuals with addiction, mental illness, and possibly a criminal history. Would pose to our kids in our community. Including the receiving home residents right next door. This project will inherently draw such individuals to the area. You say that there's no walk-ins, but on page three or four of this proposal, it states that. People in the immediate vicinity will have first priority. The receiving home residents, the families and the children that use this park and playground right next door cannot be promised or guaranteed that there won't be any serious risk to their kids' safety. From such a program of this type, such a location. Respectfully, Mayor and Councilmembers, I oppose this project because I do dearly care about children. I'm a mother myself. I'm a community member. I'm a neighborhood watch leader, and I'm a volunteer that cares about kids. And I know you do too. Please consider the safety and well being of the kids, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kathy Cook.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I live in this neighborhood and I attended the rally last night. I'm opposed to this location, of course, just like everyone else. It's right next to the Sensitive Children's Receiving Home. And also Del Paso Park. You as leaders, you can't solve one problem. Which is the homeless problem by creating an even worse problem. By endangering children that have already been traumatized by domestic violence, sexual abuse, drug addiction. This is just common sense. We know we need to find a suitable location for the homeless shelter. It should be one central site that served where all services are located rather than spreading them out. All over Sacramento. That is just not an efficient use of taxpayer dollars, and it doesn't make sense. Right next door to a children's receiving home, it's unimaginably callous and insensitive. None of us want to read a news story about a child being molested or worse. By a homeless person. Don't let that happen. You have the power. The city could use some of this money to rehabilitate the park. Rehabilitate the baseball field that's been neglected for decades. And turn the Science Museum into. What it was originally. For a nature center like that they have in Ephesus. That would be appropriate use. And it would protect the neighborhoods. It would improve the neighborhoods. And a fifty bed homeless shelter right there. Isn't really going to solve the problem when we have a sixty seven percent increase. In homeless people, it's probably over ten thousand people. So, yes, we need a solution, but. Next to a children's receiving home is not the solution.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Daphne. Daphne, if you'll unmute.
Yes, Madam Clerk, thank you. Mayor, I respectfully. I'm gonna say this. The policy that you have with navigation centers is not working. We were forced to have one here in South Sacramento. We still have women and children out on the street here in this area, and the receiving process is not helpful. Well, it's not. It's not viable. You have maybe one or two people helping hundreds. You have a median income in the city of Sacramento of thirty three thousand five sixty five based on the twenty twenty census. You have average. Incomes being thirty one thousand two hundred up to fifty two thousand. Your housing options are not working for the constituents in which you represent. You need to look at ADU options. There are several that are happening in San Jose and San Diego. And I believe that they're going to be doing one in Tahoe Park very soon. We need you to kind of step back from your original position. Navigation centers and triage centers don't work in San Francisco. Their numbers show you that they don't work. You didn't listen to us when we talked to you in Metta View, and you're not listening now. We're looking for you to look at housing options that are going to work for individuals that make fifteen dollars an hour. That is your constituency base. We're looking for you to make housing options that allow people who make thirty one thousand two hundred fifty two thousand to qualify for homeownership. That means their mortgages need to fall in between one thousand forty dollars and seventeen hundred and thirty three. That is who you represent. I know that you have a desire to represent those who make four hundred and fifty thousand up to five hundred thousand. But that's not your constituency base, and I I'm tired of you trying to fit a. Round peg or a square peg in a round hole. So please listen to your constituents, step back and try again.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Elizabeth.
Hi. I am really disgusted by all of my neighbors' comments before me. The only dangers. The primary danger. That one would have to face upon meeting an unhoused person on the sidewalk. Is having to meet someone they have put all of their anger and hatred towards face to face. Heart to heart and acknowledge their own hearts guilt for their dehumanization of them. We don't, we teach in school that you have to work. So much to earn so little. And those who are worthy of of validation, of love, of success are celebrities. And those who have made it to the top run. It, so of course. The having to come face to face with unhoused people. Who show us that this is not reality is uncomfortable. But these are people. You assume they have no investment in nature or they don't have children themselves. That they're not invested in actually cleaning up because when one cleans up, you feel a lot better. And you assume all of these things about them. But they're people just like you. They want to do better. They want. To have clean areas around them. They want nature to be in harmony. They want. They want a good life. And to deny them this is unacceptable and cruel.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is David Jacobs.
Okay, Mike, yeah, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for. Clarifying. The previous. Program that that basically I had told my neighbors I was in supportive was a was a respite center. That was only going to be open during extreme temperature and and inclement weather. I've been looking at this issue a lot over the last couple of years and. This I think it's been the mayor's right. The situation has changed and things are getting worse. But I don't agree with the the mayor's assessment of. The use of land that he's claiming is fallow. And I'm really afraid that that's going to lead to the city utilizing. The the previous baseball diamond and the two parking lots associated with that particular part of the city. This is a polarizing issue, and so it's difficult to have conversations with people. On this. I appreciate that the city and the and the mayor have a very complex plan. I appreciate that the city and the mayor have a very complex plan, and they're doing their, their heart is in the right place. And they have a complex issue, and they have some complex solutions. So you're trying to assemble a solution to this problem. The public is aware, and they're in their own bubble. We are seeing the degradation of our community. We're seeing the refuse, the human excrement, and really dangerous behavior of some of the mentally ill that are really interacting with the traffic at Watt Avenue and Auburn Boulevard. So, I want to caution the council to listen carefully to the overwhelming resistance to this.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I just want to emphasize, I don't think that the people who live in the residence around in the county.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is S. Bailey.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. Well, hello, my name is Samantha Bailey, and I am a resident of Sacramento. I am greatly not in favor of the homeless shelter proposed next to the children's receiving home. My family, me, I have used, oh, sorry. I have used, my family has used the services at the children's receiving home, and I'm very appreciative to them and to the staff members and the services provided there. The children's receiving home was a benefit to my family and families in need. The children's receiving home greatly helped us. The, oh, excuse me. And the need that I'm talking about is child suicide and depression. My 13-year-old child, she suffers from emotional turmoil, such suicide attempts. It is a very difficult and stressful time to navigate, and the children's receiving home helped us. A homeless encampment next door would not benefit those kids. It would hinder their growth. It, oh. The children and their families are there during the most stressful times of their lives, and adding a homeless activity in the proximity of their treatment is ridiculous. Homeless activity would be easily seen by the children who are trying to recover at the home. This situation to me is about the children, it's about the kids. The children's center is like a school. If you haven't used it, it's like a school. It's a school that teaches kids the tools not to harm themselves mentally and physically. You're basically considering putting a permanent homeless shelter next to a school. I've heard your comments today. Thank you, everyone, but this is truly not a benefit to the community. Please don't allow this to continue, and please find another property to utilize, not next to the children's center. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tim Vetalinsky.
Thank you. My name is Tim Vetalinsky. I've been involved in the conservation and restoration of Del Paso Regional Park for 40 years. The, we, I appreciate the council and the mayor's efforts to resolve the homeless crisis, but we should not be doing that in our municipal parks. The SEQA document that was done for this proposed project was completely inadequate. There was no alternatives analysis of alternative sites in the North Sacramento area. The document did not address the natural and cultural resources of the park. There was no discussion of the ongoing violation of the Federal Clean Water Act by city contractors who filled in the seasonal wetland on Al Creek Terrace, which is adjacent to the site and within that site plan. The SEQA document had poor methodology, where they used the incorrect baseline for studying the impacts of the homeless on the park. The campers, the illegal campers who have spread across the park have done tremendous damage to the natural resources. Many scores of oak trees, many of them very old trees in the 300-year-old range have been killed or vandalized by the campers, including with campfires, axes, and so forth. The water quality of Arcade Creek has been severely degraded by human excrement and used hypodermic needles. That will only get worse as this homeless center attracts more and more people to the area. And if they are declined service at the center, they will just wander away from the security perimeter at the center and work their way into natural habitat areas of the park and into the residential areas. The city council must solve this problem without endangering public safety and the natural environment, and must vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Crystal Sanchez is our final speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Crystal Sanchez, and I'm the president of the Sacramento Homeless Union. We are neutral on this respite center because we have some serious concerns. As you know, there's 20,000 people on any given night living on our streets. We have concerns with the implementation of this. And we have been informed that DCR is going to be one of the only referral processes, and that people can call 311. The problem is, is that the majority of these people do not have access to a phone. They don't have an access point to get there. And if this is a true respite center, it would be for the entire community because we have people who live in poverty, who don't have air conditioning, and again, need this respite. We have concerns about the children's receiving home. I am a former foster group home youth and somebody who has utilized the children's receiving home in my past. And I also advocate for homeless families who have their children in this situation. The issue is, is that children's receiving home is not necessarily the most secure spot, site. People run away, they leave. And the issues are, in our view, is that we need to have more conversations about how we can truly utilize this respite center, potentially for families, because we have multiple families on the streets right now whose children are in the children's receiving home. I think that there just needs to be more discussion. And lastly, we should not have to sue you guys for respite. This is something that everyday people need, whether you are housed or unhoused. And again, just keep pushing for more sites. But I think this needs to go back to the drawing board. There needs to be more discussion. Thank you.
Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the members of the public. Now, let's turn it over to the council for debate and potential action. I have Councilmember Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we go through this exercise often when the site is proposed. We hear a lot of testimony from people who are fearful of the effects of a homeless shelter in the immediate area, and those concerns are certainly valid. I visited this site yesterday. I spoke to Aaron Johansson and staff, Jed O'Rourke, Greg Fishman was there, and looked the site over. Look, I'm not a stranger to this. The railroad shelter, the very first triage shelter in our city was in my district. And, you know, I've got a lot of experience with this. This site, it depends what you use it for. So, I heard numerous people say that this would be a permanent homeless shelter. It's not. It is not a low-barrier triage shelter. That is not the intended purpose. This is really an outreach and engagement center. The average stay of people who will be here will be relatively short. At least that is the intent of the way it will be managed. So, Aaron, I'd like to ask you a few questions. And of course, Bridgette, if the question is more appropriate for you, you can certainly answer.
Right.
So, Aaron, when we spoke yesterday, I asked.
No, I mean, that's good.
Marthala, you need to go on mute, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Aaron, when we spoke about who would be navigated to an outreach and engagement center, can you give me an idea? I questioned you about drug addiction, you know, mental health issues. And if I heard you right, you explained to me that the intent here would be to navigate people who are actually ready to make change in their life and move through the continuum, hopefully into housing or into another situation that would be beneficial for their personal growth and getting out of the state of homelessness. So can you elaborate a little bit?
Yes, and I think that you're exactly right, that that is the intent. But that doesn't mean that we would preclude people with mental health challenges or substance use disorders, because we would be really interested in connecting them with the most appropriate resource, as Bridgette had talked about, that she spoke to Siobhan earlier today about having some connectivity with county resources for those folks. And that's sort of our specialty. So, yes, we're not, we're not really targeting the folks that are in active crisis. There are, we would, we would use our crisis respite center for those folks. We're not targeting people that are in a psychotic, drug-addicted state. That's more appropriate to the Sure Center. But we would be open to folks that are experiencing all kinds of challenges and help, but help them get to the next right place. That's why we would have social workers on hand that would be doing assessments, that would be connecting people with the available services, and again, connecting them with coordinated access so that they can actually move through the process towards housing as it becomes available.
So, one of the benefits I see of this particular project is gathering HMIS data on everybody who walks through the door.
Yes.
To help us perfect our coordinated access system, which this council and the county and the continuum of care are equally co-invested in. You know, we have to get that ball rolling if we're really going to solve issues for people. How long would you anticipate that people would stay at the outreach and engagement center?
And that's a little bit hard to say because it's really about choice as well. But a couple of days here and there, but they can't stay longer than 23 hours at a stint. So, we would have a little, they would take a break. We would schedule them to come back, and just within a few hours. So that we're, it's not a shelter. We're very adamant that we need to not call it a shelter. It's not a shelter. It is a respite center for outreach and engagement. But you are right about the HMIS system, and the results of DCR and HOPE's outreach speak for themselves. We have increased the entries into that system. I don't have, Bridgette can tell you the number, I don't know the number, but I know it's a lot. What is it?
Over 70%.
70%. And that is key. That is how we really manage the homeless problem as we know it and as we need to solve for it. We need to know the size of it and where people are and how to connect with them when we do have resources that are available to them. And the best way to do that is for all of us to participate in the HMIS system and tie that to the coordinated access system that we are building.
Well, of course, I'm a real believer in that. So, when people come into the center, this is not triage. This is not bring your kayaks and barbecues and three dogs and everything that you own, thinking that you will live here for a protracted period of time. Is that correct?
That is also correct, you know. And that is one of the things too, that I mean, I think Jed said it pretty well yesterday, is that people are going to have to be ready to give up some of that stuff. And as we operate Palmer Apartments in Del Paso right now, maybe people don't even know it, but it is an intermousing program. When people come there, they come from the streets, and we have conversations about this has what you need. So, we can't house all of your things. We can't house five dogs. But we can help you rehome those dogs, and we can help you with the one that you choose to keep with you because we do have kennels and we have facilities for a pet.
People fear that with any installation like this, that it will be an attractive nuisance that drug sellers will come, that other campers will camp right adjacent. What do you say to the people who live in the counties surrounding this area to swash those fears?
So, we are responsible for the area around us. So, there, and we have security for that, and we will be working with anybody who's in those surrounding areas to bring them in and help navigate them to the next right place. So, we're not just going to be staying inside and, you know, taking care of the people that are there. If there is a person camping across the street at a business and that business calls us, we're going to send outreach worker to come talk to them and help connect them somewhere. So, that's where we're going to really try to make sure that we're good neighbors, you know, depending on whatever the issues we face are.
Thank you for that. You know, those fears are reasonable. At Railroad, you know, we ran into some issues with drug vendors hanging around the triage center. But triage is very different than an outreach and engagement center. It's a very different creature by its nature. Having seen the site and seen the security measures that are taken, the sanitation measures, happily, you're using two trailers that I was substantially procured two years ago. Really glad to see some of that equipment being used. I would say this, Mr. Mayor. I've had a lot of discussions with people in the county and supervisors, and they have told me a lot about a potential project that they have that is very close to going under contract, that could be a very substantial project. It would be my desire that, assuming this passes, that if the county perfects their contract and purchases a site, and if they are serious about creating more of a Haven for Hope campus-type model, and if they entreat the city to be an equal co-investor in that project, that at that time, I think it would be a good idea to retire the Science Center because we will have a much more robust program to get involved with. Look, we all know that without the county and engagement with the county to provide services and co-invest with us on the homeless conundrum, nobody's going to win, not in the near term or the long term. I can definitely support this with the idea that if all those ifs from the county come to fruition, that we would say, okay, this is no longer the site that we need for this purpose, and move together with the county to a more robust project.
Let me just say, Councilmember Harris, I appreciate you raising that. I would love nothing more than what you just described. But I also.
You and me both.
But I also believe we cannot afford to wait on some unnamed, unspecified site or promise of a site, so.
Mayor, I agree. All I'm asking is that we keep our eyes open and capitalize upon that possibility if it should present itself. I believe that they're serious, and that is a definite step forward. The other thing is that if problems arise at the site, that we make a commitment to deal with them and not just leave the constituents in the area at, you know, losing their minds. I don't think those kinds of problems will arise. There won't be needles, there won't be feces. You know, every once in a while, there might be some behavioral issues, but this is going to be well-staffed. And very substantially staffed, as a matter of fact. But I think we need to have regular reports back about what issues are arising so that we can be very realistic about the efficacy and the operations and make sure that we are not doing harm to the adjacent community.
And Councilmember Harris, that's a great point. There is already a commitment with our children's receiving home and others to make sure that we're giving regular reports back and also working with crime stats and other to make sure that we're supporting everybody in the area and our fellow agencies and working with the county on those concerns.
And part of those reports back, Bridgette, should be the successes.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, it goes back to coordinated access. You know, how many people we manage to get into housing, into reunification, into a program, into whatever, wherever they go. We want to know the plus and the minus so that we can have very strong and realistic discussions about these efforts that we make to curtail homelessness and create a better path for people.
Absolutely, and that will be one of the bonuses of the HMIS data, is that we're able to give you that full report, and Nick will bring that forward on a regular basis and report back to you.
Are we talking monthly, or what do you?
Yeah, we're looking at a monthly.
Okay.
We need it more, we can do that as well, Councilmember.
All right, Mayor, thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Luloe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, anytime this topic comes up, it's a very tough topic. And, you know, I'm very torn about it. Here we have a vulnerable unhoused community that desperately need help. And then we have, you know, right next to a facility that has vulnerable children that are attending this facility because they desperately need help. You know, I've had the opportunity to read some of the comments that have come to us. And it's very unfortunate because anytime we vote on anything like this, there are definitely winners and then there are losers. And it's unfortunate that that we cannot be on the same page with our friends at the county, with the elected officials out of the county. I'm pretty sure all of you have seen the letter that we all received from Supervisor Desmond, you know, and just kind of carrying on, adding on to what my colleague, Council- my colleague, Councilmember Harris, just alluded to is that the county is in fact looking at a site, uh, they have identified the site. And when I'm reading the, the supervisor's letter, and I'm gonna quote, "The science center would have negative impact on the county's effort to explore other sites in the north part of unincorporated area." And that's, that gets me a little bit concerned that if we move forward with this side, what kind of a cooperative cooperation are we gonna be able to get from our friends at the, at the county? Also, this center can serve about fifty people at a time. And our latest counts are around over nine thousand people. Um, and the question is, what's really the objective out of, uh, out of what we're doing? Um, I know that we want to do something and that we've committed to do something. But it's somewhat unsettling, uh, when everything that we do seems to only increase the number of unhoused, especially in my district that I represent, which is District Two. And when we look at this project and we say, you know, for this, will this project truly be successful? And then how do we define success? Uh, have we sat around and really tried to determine what, what number is that success amount? I wanna thank Bridget Dean, uh, for everything that DCR is doing. I know that you guys are, uh, overworked and, uh, under, understaffed. But again, the conversation between the city and county about this site has take, the conversation's been taken today between your office and, and Siobhan. So I, you know, again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that with a project like it is, there has to be a plan, a much, much sophisticated plan that has a end, middle, uh, I mean, beginning, middle and end. And, and what is the objective, what, what is the goals that we're trying to achieve? If we move on this, um, location, and knowing that county might stop moving on the location that they're looking at, or if it's enough, completely a whole different location. Again, I think it just illustrates a lack of communication between the city and the county. You know, and I don't think we can really turn our, uh, turn a blind eye, uh, on how this community is gonna get impacted. You know, most of this, um, community is in the, uh, unincorporated area. But still, just yesterday, you know, um, across the street, people were picking up needles, uh, from the sidewalks and, um, emptied bottles of, um, alcohol. And I think we have, I'm hoping that we can do a better job in partnering up with our friends in county because without them, I don't think we can really do that much. If there isn't a partnership that includes the county, considering the county borders will be the most impacted, it's maybe take a pause and work more aggressively to get this right with the county on our side. You know, I understand that there's a good neighbor policy. But my question is, on the unhoused that, you know, don't get admitted or for whatever reason, they're gonna come out of that vicinity, where are they gonna go after that? They're gonna camp somewhere in, around that area. And, and we kind of, we all know this. In the last conversation that was between that community and the police and the sheriff department were on the call. And I'll, I'll, I know I, we have Chief Lester here, but I know the sheriff department indicated that there are understaffed and they're not sure if they can, uh, attend to the calls as soon as possible. Uh, I, I think if we have Chief Lester on the call, on, on this call, I don't know, or maybe even, there you are, how are you, Chief?
Wonderful.
On this site, if there are issues, uh, what do you think the time to, um, get to the side or address the issue? What is the timeline that we're looking at? Because we had a previous, you know, and this meeting was maybe six months ago. And, uh, it wasn't a very optimistic answer at that time. So has there been any changes since then?
Well, in all fairness, we have to serve the entire city of Sacramento. And so depending on the type of call, that would determine our response. And so, as you know, we have, um, a very robust prioritization system based on the type of call. And so, um, it would be the prioritization of the call would also be, you know, the available units at the time. And that really does vary throughout the day. Certainly, we try and respond to calls as quickly as possible, but there are a lot of factors that impact that. So I'm sorry, I can't give you, um, in it like an exact timeline or frame, but I can tell you that we would respond to calls there, just like we would, you know, to any, um, call for service within the city limits.
Thank you. Has there been a conversation between you and the sheriff department to recognize where is the cutoff line on the services that, you know, our officers are gonna, uh, report to? And where is that cutoff line where the sheriff, um, officers need to attend to?
Well, yes, we actually serve, um, to the edge of the city limits. And then, I mean, it's a, you know, it's pretty well delineated. And, uh, even in our CAD system, it will tell us whether it's a city location or a county location. Um, and then if there's ever a question over jurisdiction, sometimes both agencies will respond and we will work it out on scene. That typically happens like, um, for collisions, um, trying to determine jurisdiction and intersections.
Thank you very much, Chief. Bridget Dean, I know that your, your counterpart is Siobhan on, on this at the county, correct? How many, how many conversations have you guys had? And are you guys, or is this something that you're planning to have as far as any particular system that's gonna be implemented and who's gonna do what? Have those conversations been discussed?
Councilmember, those conversations began when we very first started discussing the site as a potential respite center. So those conversations have been ongoing uh, throughout the several months that we've met with the county and with the community partners and business partners in that area. Additionally, uh, when we went to a serv- uh, weather-based location, um, that changed it a bit, but it still allowed us to have access to the CST and access phone numbers for the county as we do across the city. So, you know, that goal of working together, I believe, is absolutely attainable here. And we all know that that's been a difficult collaboration, I think, for some time here in Sacramento. And I really believe that this opportunity for us to use this space to start that collaboration that will be ongoing, to Councilmember Harris's point and yours, if there is a county location that will eventually open, we can work all those, uh, issues out now so that when that if and when that location opens or others, that we're able to really start using that as our catalyst to continue solid collaborative partnership. And so my goal is that this will continue to help us move forward with that.
And this is where I need your help and expertise, Bridget Dean. Based on your experience, and I know you, 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 you have, uh, quite a bit of it, do you think, uh, there is gonna be an influx on the, on house within that area once a site like this goes live?
No, we have homeless in the area now. And, uh, the individuals, whether it's right around that area or over the freeway into more of your area, right where we are frequently working. Um, we already have our home, we have unsheltered populations nearby now. And I do have to state that, you know, we've had security on site there for a couple of months now. They have built solid relationships, we work closely with park rangers and the impact team from SAC PD. And so I don't think you're gonna see an influx, that's one of the key pieces. Um, again, I think Councilmember Harris specifically stated this. We're not talking a walk-in, no barrier shelter. We're talking a respite center that allows outreach and engagement based on a referral into the process. And that's essential. In many ways, we should look at this as we do with, um, some of our other programs when we have availability, which is, you know, some of our motel counts, case management teams like City of Refuge, they become an extremely key piece to keep that person stable until we can get them the motel room. This allows us in that area to stabilize that person until that next space is available, which often we lose some of those folks because we have to go, meaning that they don't stay connected. It's not that they, uh, you know, necessarily leave the area, but that ability to have that connection with Hope staff will be really key in getting the folks who are ready to move to the next step up and out off the streets.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Luloy, let me turn it now to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to appreciate everybody who's called in and all of the folks who've been reaching out. I understand this is a site that is really, um, folks feel strongly about. But as was mentioned before, I don't think there's ever been a site that folks don't feel strongly about. Um, and really want to appreciate the context that Bridget has given here today and what this will do, you know? I first want to recognize that it's my understanding that the site that the county is looking at is a mile away. It's a full mile away. Um, and yes, it's in the same area as, um, this center will be, but there is plenty of need. Um, a fifty-bed facility for us is not going to, to solve that. And I, I'm trying to figure out how to word this because I obviously, what I want more than anything is partnership with the county. And I want to tell a little story about something called the Downtown Services Hub. This was a building that the city of Sacramento was prepared to buy with the county. This is something that we worked on for months. And we did site visits, Bridget's team did multiple meetings with the county. We had supervisors on those site visits, we had funding plans we developed. We were working on a strategy to make this happen. And six months into this process, six months into my constituents being told, hey, I understand there's an urgent need, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. We were told that there was a four-one vote and closed session to pull back out of the site by the county board of supervisors. That was it. Um, so I want to believe that this Watt Avenue site is going to happen. I want this more than anything, I want county partnership more than anything. Our businesses, our residents, we've been joining together in letters now for a few weeks saying, gosh, we really, really, really want to work with you, we need substance abuse, we need mental health real-time response. We need all of the things that we know that you're capable of giving us, we desperately need your help. We desperately need sites in the county, we want to work with you. We're not even accusing you of any dereliction of duty, nothing, we're just saying, please, please help us. We have a six-person, hundred-person waitlist for substance abuse treatment, we have thousands of people without shelter. We have no real-time mental health response in the city of Sacramento. And I will note that we are the only jurisdiction within the county of Sacramento that they say they're not gonna do this in. Um, we desperately need this partnership from the county. And so I want nothing more than to be able to say, great, the county's stepping in, we don't need to do this. I really, really want that to be the case here today. But I've got to say that I've gotta see it first. I've got to see it first, um, because we have been waiting and waiting and waiting for the county to act on this stuff. And I am so proud that we are figuring out ways to step up. I'm gonna recognize that this isn't sustainable. There's no way we're gonna meet the full level of need, we've got thousands of people out there. Fifty-bed respite is not going to solve all the issues in that neighborhood, it's not even gonna make a dent in that part of town, probably. It's really just gonna be an opportunity for us to try to start with a few dozen folks to get them into some of the waitlists and some of the queues and some of the services available to them. But that's not gonna be anything close, we need them to step up. But I also really firmly believe that we can't wait for that, we really can't. History has shown us that this is not something that we can anticipate from them, but I will give anything, I will help with anything, I will talk to whoever we need to talk to if they're ready to step forward on the site. And I will, we, I'm sure, I don't want to speak for other colleagues or the mayor, that we will gladly make changes to our site if it's necessary for the county to do things that are down the line that we desperately need. I don't, I would have no problem with that when and if it manifests. I just have to say that the conversation tonight, and, and I appreciate Supervisor Desmond writing us a letter. I appreciate some folks reaching out to me over the weekend, I'm sure they were reaching out to all of you as well. I would love to see that happen, I really would. But I have to see it happen first, and so I'm supporting this today. I'd like to move the item, I don't know if anybody has yet. Um, I will also just like to say to the point about law enforcement response, because Councilmember Luloy, you bring up an important question. And so I think from my context, I look at this from a different perspective. Because what I hear from the captains in my area is that easily ninety percent of the calls they get are related to homelessness. Um, they're related to mental health crisis, they're related to folks who are blocking areas. And what they desperately want, desperately, desperately want is a place to take people to get help, desperately. And when the Downtown Services Hub fell through, I can almost guarantee the officers in my district were some of the most disappointed people because they thought they were finally gonna have a place that they could refer people to. They thought they finally have a place that they could take people to. The best they can offer folks now is a one-way ride to Loaves and Fishes. So that's the only place that will kind of take you on a walk-in-ish basis, right? Um, so this is something that will help alleviate, hopefully, at least a little bit of that demand on law enforcement time. Because now there is a place folks can go, now there is someplace we can take people. And to have experienced folks like Erin and the whole cooperative team on site who do this for a living, who've done this for decades successfully, who are gonna be there to help triage that, it's gonna be such an asset to the folks in those doors that are right outside those doors to that entire community. And we will have staff on site, um, who know what to do when someone's standing in the road in a mental health crisis, who are gonna be able to respond and work in partnership with law enforcement on those issues, so. And I also wanted to say that I think one of the elephants in the room, at least in my district, is the WX Safe Ground. And I want to address that directly because there was camping outside of the area of WX F Ground. And one of the things I want to say first is that that safe ground was set up in ten days. It was not set up with the thoughtfulness that Bridget and Erin have just mentioned. It was not set up with the foresight of conversations, of management plans, of good neighbor agreements. We were dealing with a crisis of construction is coming, hundreds of tents need to move. And we set that up super quickly and I would never do it that way again. What we're seeing here tonight is very much the thoughtful process that has been deployed successfully for multiple shelters and housing all around our county. I will also say that although there were camps outside WX that crime rates were consistent with the rest of the city. And that calls for service related to homelessness actually went down. Um, and we doubled the rate of successful exit for chronic unhoused people into shelter. So while it may not have looked that great, even though it was set up in a very unintentional way, it did deliver those outcomes. Our city team has demonstrated over and over again that they're capable of doing this in a really thoughtful and deliberate way. And so I have all the confidence that this site is gonna be run well, that they're gonna take all the steps they need to do to make sure folks inside and outside are safe. And that this is something that we really can't wait on because we've already been waiting. And we've been waiting now for months to make this site operational. And so I hope to goodness that the county does start moving on those sites. I'll be the first one to raise my hand and dedicate all of my time and resources to helping whatever they want to do happen, happen. Because we desperately need that support. But in the meantime, we can't pass up a fifty-bed facility, that's right there, not fifty beds, but fifty-person facility for respite. Um, because that's just too good of an opportunity for us to really address some crisis, um, that's in the community right now, so. Sorry if I went on a little long there, I just feel very strongly, given my direct experience, um, that I wanted to say those things. Thank you, Mayor, and I moved the item. For everyone.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanier, Vice Mayor Ashby.
Thanks, Mayor, I'm torn on this one. Uh, it's not really true that every project has met with this kind of controversy upon citing. Capitol Park and La Macha and Staybridge were all well-received by their communities. But I think it's in part because they came with enough funding to guarantee the community that there would be service provision. The tiny homes that already exist in District Two were not met with this kind of opposition. They too had funding for robust service provision. You know, WX and Meadow View were, whoo, really difficult fights, Joshua's House, really difficult fights. But the thing that WX Meadow View, this site and Joshua's House all have in common is they are really close to a school or a community center or a youth facility. And I think that really, uh, brings out the, the fighter in a lot of folks. For me personally, of all the people who've spoken today, the person that really struck the chord with me is Crystal Sanchez. And maybe that's just because I know her so well, but, you know, she's a former foster youth who now is arguably the strongest advocate in the city for homeless services. And even she says, you know, we're taking a neutral position on this one. It's hard, I really applaud the mayor's work to get the children's receiving home to work with us and talk about how we can partner on the project together and, and how it, it could be in the best interests of folks. But I too have worked in and around foster care for a long time and know a lot of people and have been to the facility, I don't need to go visit it today, I've been there many times. It's not a location where kids are locked in, so they, they do run away a lot. I, I know a lot of people, one of you brought up Rochelle Dittmore on this call. Ask Rochelle how many girls she's gone down onto Auburn Boulevard and picked up after they ran away from the facility. She'll tell you, it's a big number, not a small number. And that's scary. I'm not sure it's a reason not to do it, but it's definitely a reason for us to have, uh, really robust, ongoing dialogue about this site. I'm not sure that twenty-four-seven respite is the right use of this site. And I'm for sure, um, uncertain about having adults that are not attached to children at the site. If you all were proposing right now the expansion of wind homeless shelter at that site, I would be thinking, man, that's clever, what a good match, because we could. What a good match, because we could be partnering with the children's receiving home. And then we could pour some money into Del Paso Park there and potentially turn this into like a corridor or hub for youth services for young people at risk. If you were proposing, as Crystal Sanchez suggested, a reunification center for parents who are experiencing homelessness and struggling with custody of their children, of which there are many. Uh, I would also think, huh, that's, that's a clever idea where we could use the sort of proximity to the children's receiving home as a, a benefit to the people that we're serving. And I just wonder if we're moving forward so quickly that we've skipped over the right population for that site. And you know, um, there's no proposed time limit on this, though many people have talked about what would be the out limit on it. Uh, we haven't really talked about how we'll invest in Del Paso Park. It's a tragedy, the condition of that park adjacent and what we could do there. And I know the mayor is very keen on this kind of, um, partnership, but maybe we can look at how we could invest in Del Paso Park on the other side of this project. How we could make that a higher priority. This is the third time in recent years that we're calling on District Two to be the housing entity. And I think we have to be honest with ourselves. Railroad Drive was the number one call for service location in the city every day that it was open. I'm not saying this location will be, as Councilmember Valenzuela has clearly pointed out, we've gotten a little better at this as we've gone along. But it, it's not far from reality that there will be a lot of calls there. And as Councilmember Harris also indicated, there probably will be some mental health crisis. It doesn't mean there will be needles strewn everywhere and people defecating in the street out in front. In fact, this should help with some of that because there will be people there. But it, it also does mean that people who are in crisis will be directed to that site for services and help. So, uh, that, that's a real thing that we have to grapple with and, and they will be directed somewhere. But Mayor, I've shared this with you and, um, I'm going to share it right now. The biggest issue of all here is that the city manager's words cannot be glossed over. And Councilmember Valenzuela mentioned this. I think everyone who's spoken tonight has at least mentioned this. I hope to put a finer point on this. We agreed to a ballot initiative. A ballot initiative that says that the city of Sacramento will house a certain number of folks. We tied it to our population. We bent over backwards. We worked with the proponents all under the guise that they would apply enough pressure to compel the county to do the same. And that has not happened. And now we're all hearing, maybe it's rumor, so I'm not going to count it as fact because it hasn't happened yet. We're all hearing about the county bringing forward language to increase enforcement. Not housing, not mental health services, not addiction services, not go after all the things that we're going after, but enforcement. Which is going to further pinch the city of Sacramento. And I know it irritates the heck out of every member of this council, especially our leader. But I want to see this body compel the county to join us. We can't just keep standing in their place. And I know that irritates you, Mayor. I know it does.
No, Vice Mayor, can I interrupt you for two seconds?
Yes.
And say, I agree with every single thing you just said, especially the, the last part of it. And all I will say to you is stay tuned because you're absolutely correct. And I'm going to speak to it after you're done.
Yeah, I'm trying to give you my best setup pitch here, Mayor, because this is ridiculous. We are, we, you guys, just in case this is the first time somebody chimes into the city of Sacramento meeting, understand, here are the departments we have. We clean up your water. We pick up your recycling, your trash. If you need speed bumps, we have a process for that. We have firefighters, which, you know, they do a great job and the ambulances. Uh, we're part of the team that helps with the library. We have a police department. We have a great youth division. We have a parks department. We do economic development. We have no mental health division. We don't do child welfare. We don't do foster care. And we're not the conduit who receives the funding from the state to provide those services in the city of Sacramento. It's not what we do. So when we open a center that the county has already said, well, we're not going to help them with, then we're just saying, well, we'll bring to bear everything that we have, which is great, very humble and kind of us. But we don't have enough. We don't have enough. We can't do it. And WX and Meadow View are already suffering from not having enough support. We have to do something. It's not acceptable. We need the county. And you know, I for one want to know, and I'm very much looking forward to the mayor's comments after this and the city manager's comments on what we as a city are doing to compel the county to be a better partner on these issues. And I, I love DCR, Bridget Dean, Erin, Hope Cooperative. They're amazing, but we are literally giving them crumbs in asking them to, you know, make wedding cakes. It's just not possible. It's just not. We don't have those resources and we're not positioned to do it, Mayor. We need the camp, the county, we need to compel the county. And then the second point, I just want to make sure I'm very clear on is, Mayor, I, I can, you know, been on this council a long time. Sounds like you guys have some, you have votes to move this forward. Really, my heart is really torn. Uh, I really do appreciate and probably that the issue that means the most to me is that you went and talked to the children's receiving home and that they're willing. I would also just like to ask the members of this body, and really I'm asking Bridget Dean, to consider maybe a modification to this site in the near term future that really focuses on family reunification or youth. I don't think anybody on this council would mind that. But I, if that works inside of what we're trying to do, and especially on our getting to zero numbers, I think that would be a better use of the location, a better use of the spot. I compel this council to consider how you're going to invest in Del Paso Park adjacent. And Mayor, let's push our friends at the county.
So first of all, while I don't agree with everything that you said, especially at the beginning, uh, Vice Mayor Ashby, your second half of your comments, um, I, I agree practically word for word, uh, and Councilmember Valenzuela the same. And I'm not sure, as I said here today, that, uh, this is the exact forum to join this full conversation about the county, but I'm sure tempted. And I think I will make some brief comments and save them for later. First of all, in terms of the ballot measure, the city manager and I are in active discussions with the proponents, the business leadership, the proponents of the original measure, and are raising the exact issue that you just described, because here is the reality. If the county of Sacramento passes a, an enforcement only ordinance, which is rumored, don't know that to be true, but I've heard it. And we go forward with this ballot initiative, which I support, um, in November, because it's consistent with what I've been advocating for years, that all levels of government, cities, counties, the state ought to be legally accountable for actual results and to build more capacity and to link capacity, shelter, housing, services to enforcement. But if we go forward in November as is, and they pass, and they don't, and in fact, go the opposite way and pass an enforcement only ordinance, you're absolutely right. You will hear a great sucking sound. And it will be the sound of hundreds, if not thousands of people who are unsheltered in the unincorporated part of the county are in the American River Parkway coming right into our city. And I'm telling you that as the, I think you might say, the individual who has championed this cause since I became mayor, I'm proud of the work that we have done. I'm not the only one, by the way, colleagues. You have too. I'm proud of what we done, what we've done. You know, when I started, we had less than a hundred beds. Because of your efforts, we are now up to eleven hundred beds per night. And let's not forget that we have stood up a robust Department of Community Response to do that outreach. And yes, Howard and I have had our differences over these months, um, and I've had some differences with some of you, frankly. Let's go back to December, um, where we had a, a very public disagreement about enforcement, et cetera. But I will tell you, my mindset is a little bit different now. And so, you know, I thank all of you who have, uh, persuaded me to change and grow here a little bit. Because when I became mayor, based on my experience, the author of Prop sixty-three, my work on homelessness, all that I, that I have been involved in, I believed that through good leadership, but also believing that others would want to have as much urgency as I and we do in trying to solve this problem, then we could move the needle. And in fact, you talked to Lisa Bates and Steps Forward together between the city and county. Over the last five plus years, we've gotten fourteen thousand plus people from unsheltered status to housed. But of course, the problem is worse. Because people are becoming homeless, poverty, drug addiction, high housing costs are becoming homeless faster than we are getting them off the street. But there is no question that my thinking has now, uh, evolved be, to understand really, I always knew it, but to really internalize it, that the city does not do health and human services. We do not do mental health. If I knew, as I've often half joked, when I wrote the Mental Health Services Act, now three point eight billion dollars a year back in two thousand and four, that I was going to run for mayor, twelve years later, I might have written it a little bit differently. But who knew? The county of Sacramento is the Health and Human Services Agency. And we'll engage with them, whether it be collaboratively, which we have tried, or more forcefully. If we don't get the help we need, we're the largest city in the county. We are constituents of the county. Seventy-five percent of this problem is in the county. In the city, excuse me, seventy-five percent of the homeless problem is within the city that is within the county. And do you know how many homeless mental health outreach teams the county now employs countywide? In a county of one point five million people? With a homeless problem of nearly ten thousand? Three. And do you know how many of those mental health homeless outreach teams are deployed on a regular basis in the city of Sacramento? Zero. And do you know how many mental health clinical workers come through our shelters? There's a team of about ten, and I'm told they come through Bridget, you can correct me, about one hour a week. The gig is up, everybody, and it's not just going to, it's not just going to come from me anymore. The big human shield here on the issue of homelessness in the city and county. It's going to come from other places now, including the business community. Where they put out a press release today, they're appreciated, that asks the county to do what we did, which is to hold themselves accountable for capacity requirements for more shelter in the unincorporated county. And also minimum standards in terms of mental health, substance abuse, outreach, case management and actual services. And that's the right thing. And unless we are linked functionally and legally between the city and county to the constituents of the city of Sacramento and the county of Sacramento, this will not get better. Now, we are imperfect. And, and we can do, we can always do better, which is why the measure is before you tonight. Because we think it's the right thing to add this respite center, which by the way, we're not really doing in other places in the city and county. So we have more work to do. But because we're not a Health and Human Services Agency, and because we're not getting the help that we need, especially around the people who are most chronically homeless, it is time to call a different question, and it is going to be called. And yeah, anger of the mayor said this, so god darn, we have no relationship. Well, let me tell you something. Relationships are based on real commitments. They're based upon a common desire to actually make the problem better. That's what relationships are, all, all the relations in the world. Rich Desmond, who opposes this science center thing. I talked to Rich on the phone. I think Rich is a fine, is a very good elected official. Like him a lot, actually. We disagree. Okay, Sean Lowey, I know we may disagree on this. I think you work your heart out for your district. It's okay. This is not about who's mad at who, whose personality is this? You know, it's often said, I'll just say this, boy, the mayor, the mayor here drives so hard. And if only he didn't, others would step up and they would lead. Oh, yeah? Really? I would be happy to see the stage here when it comes to this issue. And then let's see what happens, because this is not a new issue in terms of the urgency around health and human services and mental health and substance abuse in our homeless population. This has been going on for a long, long time. I don't really care what the reaction is. I care about one thing. That my constituents, our constituents, including our unsheltered constituents, including our business corridors, including our neighborhoods. All of our people get more relief here from an untenable situation that could be made better, not cured, not fixed, but could be made better if there was demonstrated urgency and real support from other quarters to the level that this city council and this city management and this city has been demonstrating over the last five years, eleven hundred beds. Eleven hundred. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for speaking to the elephant in the room. I, I, I'll say one more thing. There's this notion that if only you were, if only you're collaborative, you can get people to come along. I've had a pretty good public service career based on collaboration. My colleagues from throughout the entire state of California elected me to be their leader because I, I demonstrate a caring and a collaboration. This is not about that, because I'm the same, same guy. Happy to see the spotlight, happy, happy to share credit, happy to have anybody else lead. I don't care. I'm sixty-two years old and done this for a long, long time. I just want results. All I want are better results. That's it. I'll do anything. Anything to get them, including call out the truth when that is appropriate. And so it's your fault, Angelique and Katie, because you prompted me. Um, so.
That was the goal, Mayor. That was the goal.
So more, more to come on the ballot measure itself. Um, as I said, the city manager and I are in direct communication with the original ballot measure proponents. And, uh, there will be more to come over the next week or two. All right, um, Councilmember Lowey, sorry, it's your turn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And you know, I, I, I truly do agree with you. And I think, um, the vision that you have, and I've said this all the time, is, is phenomenal. And, and, and you truly try to do everything possible for the benefit of this region. And it's really sad that when we have a leader like you that's so passionate about this, but we're not getting the support from our friends, uh, at county. And I have to do, I have to agree with Councilmember Valenzuela also that, yes, um, the time has come where we need to kind of do our thing. And if they want to come in and help out, great, you know, um. But also, Mr. Mayor, this is where I need some of your brilliance or advice. I represent a district that has the largest encampment, has the most amount of RVs. I have over two thousand affordable units. I have over two thousand affordable units, highest unemployment rate, highest crime rate. And now we got a brand new respite center coming in. See, I think you would understand if there's some concerns from my constituents and some of the business operators that, do we have the resources on the north side to make sure that the very few businesses that are standing are, are, are protected? The same thing with the, with the residents, so that's something I think, I just want to put it, plant that seed in the back of your mind, and hopefully during one of our coffee sessions, you can show me the light at the end of the tunnel. With that said, I would like to ask Bridget Dean, with this respite center, do you, as far as the game plan, why not concentrate on the, the women and children? I, I, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is like categorizing, right? I think the women and children out there are like the most vulnerable, then you have the senior citizens that are homeless, and then you kind of break it down. Why not have a, and I hate to call this a business plan, but I, for the lack of better words, a business plan that says, hey, the first six months, if we're doing referral, and be very transparent with the businesses and, and the residents there. Hey, we're just going to focus on single moms and children and senior citizens. Trying to see how we can create a, a space for them, because we do see a lot of them. And by the way, thank you so much for finding a, a room for that. The, the couple that I just kind of emailed you, and the next day you actually found a room for them. But there's, there's quite a bit of them out there, and I think, you know, if we can start with that group and kind of have a plan and, and show it to the business operators and the people that reside in that area, maybe, you know, we, we can get more friends to come and help us. And then, at the same time, I agree, Mr. Mayor, I think we should call out our, our, um, supervisors and ask them that they need to help out with this, and publicly call them out and see what they say. But Bridget Dean, do you think as a, as a plan, or how we're going to operate this respite center, can we go forward with a commitment that says, hey, we're going to go and because this is through referrals only, we're going to cover District or North SAC, and our first wave of people are going to be exclusively single moms and senior citizens?
So, Councilmember, a couple items here. Just, I know you are aware, and I think most of you are aware, that women and children or children who are experiencing homelessness have always been a priority for DCR. In fact, in our point in time count, the one success story was our motel programs here in the city, primarily working with Step Up and City of Refuge, that really made an impact on that. So, um, our population right now is about eighty percent single individuals, fifteen percent families, and then we actually have about five percent unaccompanied youth. And that unaccompanied youth, we have some really good solid programs with that we're able to support when we come across them, and our families with our motel program. Our motel is priority for families, we work diligently and our elders to get them into those spaces. So, I think what's important here is this site has so much opportunity to serve our unhoused community. And I, I will say, and I was going to say this earlier in one of the comments, and I'll make myself real brief. One of the wins for me at this site would be that we've come across families where I don't have a room right now. And this site for me allows me to say, I can get you off the street anyway. And let me get you off the street right now, and let me get you to a safe place now, while Rochelle and everybody in our, our fellow teams work to get that room available for you. So, yeah, we will definitely, we'll always have families as our priority, and we can work to get them there. And as the site shows stability, I think that there's so much opportunity to serve women and children, and we could do it safely there, as well as serve some of our other homeless, uh, community members. And that's the beauty of the referral end, is we can make sure we're not bringing in unsafe folks.
Hey, Councilmember LaLowe, can I chime in for one second on that same point with her?
Please.
Bridget, I think what I also hear him saying isn't necessarily families with children, but singles who are seeking to reunify with their children, moms or dads.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that's a, a passion for you too, and since the site is just so perfect next to the children's receiving home, what do you think about that?
About bringing in those homeless parents?
Yeah, about particularly prioritizing people who are seeking reunification or have had to, for some reason, give up custody for a bit, but are working on that reun, there are a lot of them, this is a passion for Crystal Sanchez too, what do you think about that population?
I think that's another population that we can absolutely be serving and supporting here.
So what I hear, councilmembers, is that, you know, you know, the, on the dollar bill and God we trust, I, I, I hear in Bridget we trust, to, and her team to ensure that the outreach is done to the populations, including the populations that you're talking about, that will maximize the success of the program and, and help the people that they can get to and they can help, that's what I hear. Councilmember Shanir? You're on mute, Jay.
Probably better. I, I think it's really important that we leave the flexibility to DCR, to, to work with the populations that they think are most important and most critical. I mean, no one has, has worked harder for youth, I have two youth facilities in my district. Certainly supported the one in the north area, and I think we need to do more of that. But we, if we're always going to exclude single men, we're just never going to get to the problem. And granted, fifty beds is fifty beds out of nine thousand or ten thousand. But I, I think we created DCR with the expertise to do their jobs, and I, I want to let them do their jobs. Also, just want to note, you know, Meto View has been between ninety-five and a hundred women, I, I don't think they've had any major incidents there in the entire time that it's been open and operating. At WX, which is by a facility that, that kids go to after school, it's right behind that. Half a block or so from SAC High and other schools, and we had this discussion very loudly when we, when we put it up, and we've had no problems there. The, the problems that we do have are, are external. And as long as we're, we're working with folks who are in the community and moving them off the street into a safe facility where we can hook them up with service, I think that's the best we can do. So, I, I'm, I'm happy to vote on this, I want to move it forward. I also would love the county, but as someone who's sat in on many, many meetings, we can't wait. We need to do what we can do, we cannot become a social service agency. But working at the margins here, I think, is important, and, and continuing to try to work with the county is what we have to do. So I, I want to call the, call the question here, vote on this item.
All right, let's call the roll, please, on the items.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Ashby.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, one last question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
At what point are we going to grade this facility as it's working great, or we're having issues? Is it after thirty days, sixty days, ninety days?
Yeah, how, I, I know it says quarterly, I think, at the resolution, but if you want to come back earlier, I'll commit to you to come back earlier, Councilmember LaLowe, why don't we do it? I mean, keep the resolution as, I will commit it to you publicly here. Bring it back in thirty days, let's do a thirty day report, come on, write on. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember LaLowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shanir?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Geda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes, that's unanimous, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciate that vote, colleagues, thank you. Thirty days, okay? We will bring it back, thank you. That concludes, especially Councilmembers LaLowe and Vice Mayor Ashby, everybody, but especially, thank you. I, that, that concludes our agenda. Are there council ideas and questions?
Hey, Mayor, I have a resolution we were supposed to do at the beginning, could I just do it really quickly here?
Sure.
I'll be quick, but it is, it's actually a reluctant employee, so, city manager, I hope you're, are you there, Howard?
I am.
Okay, again, I just want you to hear this, so Kirk Thompson is retiring, and some of you may know who that is, and some of you may not, he did not want us to have him, he's not on here, he refuses to come on council. He actually doesn't want me to say anything, but his bosses do, so I'm going to, I just, I just want you to know who he is. Thirty-six years, thirty-six years he's worked for the city of Sacramento as an architect, and he's retiring as a senior architect out of Public Works and Real Property and, and out of our facilities division. Kirk graduated from Texas A&amp;M, and then got additional certificates from UC Davis to really just be able to lead in the city of Sacramento, I want you to know that he's an ADA expert, and, and he's actually the person who led the transition plan that would later become the citywide compliance project for all ADA across the city of Sacramento. Here's some of the projects that he's led on, the Animal Care Surgery Center at the zoo, many of the zoo projects, Camp Sacramento, Historic City Hall, construction of Memorial Parking Garage, several community centers, the Greyhound Bus Terminal on Richards, construction of the Old Sacramento K Street Barge and Riverfront Boardwalks, and finally, and very important to me, he delayed his retirement by actually a lot to finish the North Natomas Community Center and Aquatics Facility, and ended his career as the lead on that project, but stayed extra years, losing money to help the city of Sacramento, and now he's going to be spending a lot of time in Hawaii and snorkeling, and I just want people to recognize that somebody who spent thirty-six years of his life and all of his talent, bettering our city and making life better for thousands of people in Sacramento is retiring, so Kirk, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor, that's, that's very kind of you to do, and had I known you were going to do this, I would have compelled them to come on. Kirk's a good guy, one of the first people I met when I came to the city of Memorial Parking Garage, and he's been involved with so many different projects, and just a huge loss for us, very happy for Kirk and his family, well deserved, thank you.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to briefly thank you for your comments about the need for more county support. And on a related note, speaking of other jurisdictions and agencies that we need support from, I want to take a brief moment to talk about encampment relocations from Caltrans right of way. And first, I really want to commend the city team, you've dedicated staff time and resources, we've picked up trash, we've opened shelters and safe grounds, we've frankly done all we can to try to assist with the relocation of encampments on Caltrans property when necessary, and really worked hard to build a productive relationship. But I have to say that something in the last few months has changed. Region Three staff have resumed moving people off of their property without giving the city adequate time to develop and implement a relocation plan, and have not provided the city with any resources to facilitate relocation efforts. This means that they're moving folks up and down their right of way, and sometimes onto city property, which is not only not good for the nearby residents and businesses, it's really not good for the folks living in those encampments. I will say that most recently, when we opened the safe camping area at Miller Park, we actually offered Region Three almost all of those sixty spots with the express goal of facilitating and working together to relocate people off of X Street, and they never accepted that offer, the very generous offer that we made to them to work together and to offer those city resources to help with a common problem. And the most recent example of this breakdown in communication was at Exum, Fifteenth Street, last week, when a camp located on the off-ramp was relocated by Region Three staff with absolutely no warning to the city team, despite ongoing weekly calls between our staff and theirs. This is completely unacceptable. So after months of attempting to address this issue with Region Three staff, last Friday, I took the step to elevate my request to the new director at Caltrans, Tony Tavarez, who as of today has agreed to sit down with, with me to discuss this challenge. I've invited the mayor and Councilmember Shanir to join me in those meetings, since Councilmember Shanir's district has also been significantly impacted by the situation in recent weeks. I really truly hope that we can work together to find a solution to this crisis, because this is our shared responsibility. The city ardently wants to work in good partnership, but as you mentioned earlier, Mayor, relationships are both ways, and we desperately need that partnership and that support from our city agencies, just like we needed from the county. So I saw you come online, city manager, oh, go ahead.
You said state, you meant, you said city agencies, you meant state.
I meant state agencies, sorry, thank you. So I saw, Howard, you come online, I don't know if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, I do, I appreciate you raising this issue, and I would just add that please include my office in these discussions, because we have been in those week, weekly meetings, and this issue that you bring up had not surfaced.
So, I want to just, on this topic, and we're not debating, it's just information, to Bridget Dean, have, has the city applied for one of the state encampment relief grants, I may not have the term correctly, but the governor and the legislature put forward hundreds of millions of dollars. I believe twenty-one cities got awarded grants last year, but now there's more money this year to help us settle people, you know, get people out from the Caltrans properties into safer and, and better settings. Have we applied, have we received any money?
We have received the, I think, I believe it's open now, Mayor, and we are working with SSF and other partners to make sure we are applying for this.
Okay. So that, that's, because this same situ, similar situation occurred in Oakland, that was the first question from the NUC administration was, have you applied for this money? Have you, and if you've received it, it's intended to help us, help ourselves, help our population, help Caltrans residents, I just want to make sure we don't miss that step, okay?
Yes, we will be on it.
Even if we have to file a loan, not with any other governmental partners, correct?
Yes, we also learned that lesson last time, Mayor.
Yeah. Councilmember Valenzuela, were you done, I'm sorry, I didn't want to.
No, thank you for correcting my misstep, Mayor, I, I'm hopeful, and I think speaking of the situation in Oakland, they believe, I believe they got four point seven million dollars to help facilitate the relocation of folks, and so if we got that kind of money, I think we could be really great partners in these efforts, but in the end, nothing goes around effective communication and two-way respect and relationships that really help ensure that we're working together to solve goals that we all have, to make sure people are safe, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, okay, Councilmember Vang and then Shanir?
Thanks, Mayor, just wanted to make an addition to the log and make a request to city manager. As you know, over the past few months, our office hosted several community session, listening session regarding the development of the Hundred and Two Acres in South SAC to make sure that residents in District Eight really have an opportunity to provide a meaningful input on how the property should be used to uplift all of our communities. And I'd like to make a request to our city manager to work with staff, to report back on the scope, timeline, and budget for our planning process for the Hundred and Two Acres that considers, that considers several items that I like to lay out. I'll just name them briefly, but I'll also make sure to send an email to city manager Chan as well. There are several items that I like staff to look at, one is making sure that they consider the needs and outcomes the community expressed during our seven listening session. Many of that will be shared by our community facilitators by the end of the summer. I like for the scope of work to also consider information that was gathered by our amazing graduate interns that was part of the planning department this summer as well. I also want city staff to consider the short-term uses and long-term development, such as the multi-use, multi-use youth sports complex, Mayor, that you announced during your State of the City. Want staff to also make sure that we required a SEQA analysis, and really looking into necessary infrastructure, financing, potential investments. And lastly, making sure that we actually have a continued community process or engagement to ensure that we're moving this project along with various departments. I'll make sure to send this email to city manager Chan as well, but I wanted to make sure that I put that on the log.
I backed that up, make me the second on that log request.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Vang.
All right, Councilmember Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two requests and City Manager will have to tell me if these go on the log or we can just do that. One is the mayor and I have been working with Treasurer Colville around some creative ways to bring some more dollars in for affordable housing. And as soon as the treasurer is ready, I'd love to have a presentation for the council on what those are. So that that's number one. And again, I don't know if that needs to go to the log. I know that the treasurer is already working on this. And it's around impact investing, and hopefully we can manufacture some dollars to do some of it. It's obviously the other side of the coin from the discussion we just spent an hour and a half on. We have a desperate need for affordable housing. So that's one. The second is, and I'm doing this on behalf of myself and Councilwoman Vang, last week, as as you all know, because you were here, we passed a put a ballot measure on the ballot or measure on the ballot for youth funding. That was an eight to one vote to put it on the ballot. What we'd like to do is bring a resolution to that the council can vote on, that the city would actually support the initiative. So again, I don't know if that needs to go on the log or if that's a resolution that we can just bring. You'll have to let us know. We'll take responsibility for putting it all together and getting it into the system.
And Councilmember Chenier, I think both items need to go on the log, and that way the council has an opportunity to weigh in and then take a position.
That's right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there public testimony in any items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I have three hands raised to make public comment for matters not on the agenda, and the first is Bart Willis.
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
I would just like to say, this is my first time listening to a Zoom meeting with you. And you address all the other council members after they're done speaking, and yet you say nothing when the public who votes for you speaks from their heart and tells you how they're feeling. That comes off as someone that just doesn't care. I would like your comments, please. Thank you.
I do care, and the protocol has been to not interrupt the speakers and to not respond to every speaker, but to take in all of the input and then reflect that input in my comments or my position on any issue. I care very deeply, but I appreciate your your feedback and I'll I'll think about that.
Next speaker is Mr. Davis.
Yes, I'm glad someone mentioned that about interrupting people. As a person who's never used profanity, I've never used profanity towards any member. No matter how much I disagree, I've never used profanity. So I would appreciate it in the near future if I wouldn't be interrupted because I'm not on this phone for ego or vanity or to hear myself talk. I'm actually calling in here because I'm concerned about things that I see that are obvious at City Hall. Now, on this, today, I see it again, and it's going to be at five o'clock. And I've said this more than once. On the agenda, just before it says public comments matters not on the agenda, it says City Manager Report. Is there a City Manager Report today? Is it going to be one at five o'clock? Because if not, they should take that off the agenda because that's false advertisement. The other thing is, I wanted to thank the mayor. He wasn't here. He gave the gavel to Vice Mayor before we could thank him. And we wanted to thank him. I'll just assume you had a role to play in it. But the grant pool is open, and it's open from Monday through Friday. And I went by there this weekend just to see, and again, it's closed on the weekend for the residents, but it's open to a group that calls themselves Real Linda Aquatics. It's an all-white male group. As a matter of fact, last Sunday, me and a family member walked all the way around the pool so they could pay attention. And by the time I got back to the exit, some male walked out of the pool and asked me, could he help me? And I said, no, or how can you help me?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, I'll comment at five o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Crystal Sanchez.
Hey, again. So I definitely appreciate the conversation tonight about collaboration. And we appreciate that this is it isn't about egos and that it is about collaboration. I did send you guys a message, both you and the county, regarding a massive sweep on Roseville Road. As you know, there's three thousand to five thousand people all the way down this strip. And Union Pacific has tagged the entire side of the railroad to do railroad expansion. Again, we've talked with the Union Pacific Police, and what we're seeing is that this again is being passed. It's you guys are passing the buck. The police are telling them to move to county property, then it'll be a county problem. It's happening with the city. Again, we know that there's no resources and we know Martin versus Boise exists. So again, we really need some collaboration here. We're talking about two thousand people being displaced along the railroad. We just need to know what we need to do and how we can work together to create a situation for these people because it's unacceptable to be removing people with disabilities, people who are seniors, people who cannot walk off of the railroad tracks with absolutely nowhere to go. And so we would definitely appreciate some sort of response on what we're going to do about this situation. It is a massive amount of people. This is a very dangerous situation. These people are being moved across the railroad tracks, across Roseville Road where people speed. And it's a known location where people are getting harmed. And again, collaboration needs to happen between the federal government and our local municipalities here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Yessenya Landa.
Hello, my name is Yessenya Landa. I am resident of Garden Valley, but most importantly, I am a mother of four who attend Garden Valley, which is twenty feet across from this proposed homeless shelter. So I want to make some clarifications and I also want some answers. In our last council meeting, Mayor Darrell stated, this shelter needs to be done and some people are not going to like it. So let's clarify this. We, the people of these communities, do want to help the homeless and think this is a great idea, but the location is completely wrong. That's what we oppose, is the location, not helping the homeless. We want a more intelligent location, and this was very careless, especially when we know that there's a lot of empty lots and buildings that can be used for this project. Now, my question is, is there any empty lots or buildings for this project? The fact that the community members were prohibited to join the groundbreaking ceremony shows exactly how much Jeff Harris does not care about our community and is trying to silence the community. Let me clarify something about this groundbreaking event. The council member, Jeff Harris, misled the community by having this event on the opposite lot. Why is that? What will our children, what will this do to our children's mental health? Going to school every day, knowing that the shelter right in front of their school is where people go to die. Would you enroll your children there? Think about that. Twin Rivers has publicly announced that they're willing to work with the city. Are you willing to work with us, with them? City members, think about what you're doing. If something happens to our children physically or mentally, you will pay a heavy fine, costing you lots of money, but most importantly, your integrity.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Maria Elena.
Yes, good evening. I'm calling regarding the Respite Center that you're intending to turn into another shelter next to the Sacramento Receiving Home. And the concerns there are much as the last speaker. Unfortunately, these children don't necessarily have adults who are able to be responsible for them for whatever reasons. And it seems like the city is doing its due diligence to put individuals outside or as close to outside the city limits as they possibly can. As Representative Sean Maloney has expressed to my advocacy group personally, we do not have a say because we are not located within city lines. However, we have P O boxes in city lines. We have advocates that can easily cross two crosswalks and go within city lines. So this seems like a way to exclude individuals from having a say in the matter. Not all unhoused individuals are deviant, but we do know that children are being trafficked from the children's home. It's not hard to do an interview with some of the employees and hear the stories of what have hap what has happened. We know children have ran away and been killed on the freeway, and it's just concerning. I heard Ms. Sanchez refer to people who are disabled being displaced from Roseville Road. I think that the city really needs to, we think that the city really needs to consider if you're going to turn that into a shelter, that it be for either families or that it be for people who are, you know, physically challenged and are not able to have housing at the moment. Please reconsider this. It's not safe for children, and you are putting people just feet within not having to give them services any longer as soon as they leave the campus. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Shelley Williams. Shelley Williams, if you'll unmute. Shelley Williams, if you'll unmute. Mary, it appears I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you, members. The time is, what exactly? It is five twenty-three. We have a five o'clock meeting. We're obviously late. So here's something I'm going to ask. If, so we don't have to redo the Zoom. If the members can stay on but log off, but shut out your video and mute for a minute, let's take seven minutes stretch and come back at five thirty and begin the five o'clock meeting. Is that all right? Okay, we are adjourned, but stay online, please.